All right, go ahead.
Okay. This is the City of Boulder Planning Board Meeting of August twenty-three, twenty-two. And the full planning board is in attendance, and so let's move ahead with our meeting. We'll start out with Amanda. Who is actually running the Zoom meeting here. Giving us the rules of engagement for this meeting.
Yes, thank you so much. All right, let me get to my screen sharing here. Sorry, everyone. Voice a little tricky to navigate. Okay. Are you all seeing my slide?
Yes.
All right, thanks, everyone, for joining us this evening. No. A little freeze problem. All right, the city has engaged with community members to co-create a vision for productive, meaningful, and inclusive civic conversations. This vision supports physical and emotional safety for community members, staff, and board and commission members, as well as democracy for people of all ages, identities, lived experiences, and political perspectives. For more information about this vision and the community engagement processes, you can visit our website listed here. The following are examples of rules of decorum found in the Boulder Vice Code and other guidelines that support this vision. These will be upheld during this meeting. All remarks and testimony shall be limited to matters related to city business. No participant shall make threats or use use other forms of intimidation against any person. Absinthe, racial epithets, and other speech and behavior that disrupts or otherwise impedes the ability to conduct the meeting are prohibited. Participants are required to identify themselves using the name they are commonly known by, and individuals must display their whole name before being allowed to speak online. Currently, only audio testimony is permitted online. So just to give you a graphic example here. When we ask for public participation, you may raise your hand. If you are on the phone, you may dial star nine. And when it's time, I will adjust your settings, and then you will see an option to unmute. You can use this raise hand. Icon if you hover at the bottom of your screen, this will pop up. And you click on that, and then we will just go in order of the raised hand for everybody. And that concludes our rules of decorum. I'll turn it back over to you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Okay, well, we have a pretty short agenda for tonight. We'll see if the actual meeting duration reflects that. So the next item on our agenda is public participation. And this is the time when members of the public can address the planning board on any issue they like, except for public hearing items which are being discussed tonight, and that public hearing item is the concept plan review and comment for a proposed redevelopment of a site near Pearl East Office Park. So if you want us want to address us on that, please wait to the to the proper time, but on any other issue, now's the time, so it'll be interesting to hear your thoughts. Amanda, do we have any raised hands?
Sure. Members of the public here. If you'd like to raise your hand, now's the time. I'm not currently seeing anyone. Okay, looks like we have one so far. Two, actually, we'll start with Lynn Segal, followed by Paul Coleman. Lynn, I will allow you to start speaking when you're ready.
My cohort, Paul. I wanted to bring up something about. I don't know if this relates to use tables, but we can of public services in this town. Can you hear me well?
You're very faint.
How about now?
That's better.
Meningers. Big problem. Arts and Crafts Co-op. How do you propose that we somehow put forth measures that will retain key services like these? As it is, we're losing, you know, like. I I drive my car once every six months, but now, when I drive it every six months, I have to drive out to Hoshi on Arapahoe and Fifty-Fifth instead of Hoshi on Twenty-Six because of Ali's new big high-end development there. And all the scooter place, the fine arts place, or the it's some kind of arts. Wood arts place on the cross street where Ali's gonna take that all over, all of it. Scooters, some other car things. Thrift stores. I have to now go twenty, twenty-five minutes to a thrift store. I was able to get one in ten minutes. So we need neighborhood thrift stores, especially because the housing costs are so high up that people can't afford to spend anything, and I want to spend, but I can only afford to spend at the thrift store because I live in Boulder. So. That's one of the things is retaining key public services and cultural amenities, right? The other thing is this wealth inequality is getting way out of hand, like you hear about this all the time. But I can't go down by the creek without this trash everywhere, and that's an expense I don't want to spend. I know I'm gonna have to spend it anyway, but I'm not gonna spend it when you guys are subsidizing every friggin' business that comes up before you, every housing development, you know, the one on Michael Bosma on Arapahoe and Forty-Eighth, or whatever the cross street is there. No, just learn how to say no to the developer. And the developers need to pay for parks and recreation. They have a huge deficit for all of these services, and no to see you south. That is the elephant in the living room. Done.
Thank you. See. Mr. Coleman?
Sorry. Mr. Coleman, hold on, hold on one, just just one moment, please. Okay, you should be able to unmute and speak. Thank you.
Okay, good. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Excellent. It's an honor and a pleasure to address the planning board. I'm not a frequent visitor to your meetings, so this is an opportunity for me to just make some very general comments. You know, my big concern in life these days is climate change. I'd like to see all-electric development, no gas. I think beyond saying no gas and new development, we should also say that for remodels. They should be required to take the gas out if they're doing a remodel. We need to stop burning fossil methane. So electrify everything is is my watchword these days. And I want to thank you all for your service to Boulder. Even if I don't agree with you, I respect you guys for putting in the time and the effort to serve the people of Boulder. So thank you.
Thank you. Are there any others who wish to address planning board?
Not seeing any at this time.
Okay, well, I'll bring the public participation section of the meeting to an end. And we don't have any planning board call-ups or continuations or dispositions to deal with tonight. So we'll move right into our public hearing item, which is a concept plan review and comment for a proposed redevelopment of approximately three point ninety-nine.
Yeah, I'm sorry to interrupt. Can can we respond to the public comment at all before we get into that?
Oh, sure.
Yeah, that'd be great. I just wanted to make a quick comment.
Okay, go ahead.
So two things, just to respond to Charles. Charles, you said that you don't come to planning board often, if at all, and I wanted to voice, I think, from everybody's perspective, it's 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 really great to get new voices and to hear them in this, and so thank you for thank you for doing that. I know the Boulder's code is headed that direction, but at least from my perspective, I I agree with you that that we should go there faster. And then to Lynn specifically, I appreciate your comments. Because I also take my vehicle to to Hoshi Motors. My my niece got her first job at Ari's Thrift Shop. I've purchased a table from that 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 shop around the corner, and I'm disappointed to lose that light industrial there. And I'm hopeful that as we move forward, the planning board, when we get projects, we we figure out ways to preserve some of that light industrial and sort of mom-and-pop businesses that are make Boulder an interesting place to live, and also services like that don't disappear from. You know, as we talk about fifteen-minute neighborhoods, we often talk about coffee shops and things like that. But those types of businesses are we're losing those, and 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 they're not getting replaced here, so at least from my perspective, that's also something that I'd like to continue to focus on as we move forward. So thank you both for your comments. Thanks.
Okay. All right, so we'll move ahead with, I'll not repeat what I was just reading, but we're moving ahead with the concept plan review. Case number L U R twenty-two-two-dash-zero-zero-zero-one-zero. And we'll start out with a staff presentation, followed by questions to staff by from the board, followed by applicants' comments, and then open it up to a public comment, and then take it back in for discussion. So Steph, I think Shabnam, looks like you're getting ready to talk, so we're eager to hear what you have to tell us.
Great. Well, thanks so much. Good evening, Chair members of the board. Shabnam Bista, City Senior Planner, is gonna present staff's analysis tonight. We look forward to the discussion and your feedback. So Shabnam, take it away.
Thanks, Charles. Go ahead and start showing my screen. Okay. Good evening, planning board members. For tonight's discussion, I'll be presenting a development proposal for a four-story office and life sciences building located in the Pearl East Business Park. The proposed floor area of approximately hundred and forty thousand square feet requires a concept plan review prior to an application for site review. I'll briefly cover the information provided in staff's memo, including the purpose of a concept plan, existing site conditions, and surrounding context, a description of the proposed concept for the site, and two key issues for discussion. The purpose of a concept plan is to determine the general development plan for a particular site and to help identify key issues for the applicant in advance of a site review supplemental. Discussion and comment should be based on topics under the concept plan criteria, which is listed on the screen, as well as keeping in mind future site review application and criteria. No formal action is being taken tonight on the project. Written notice was sent to property owners within six hundred feet. Staff received no public comments. The project site encompasses forty-eight, forty-five, and forty-eight, seventy-five Pearl East Circle. The site is located in East Boulder. It's situated east of Foothills Parkway and south of Pearl Parkway. And then the BNSF Railroad is adjacent to the south property line of the larger development. The site is designated as light industrial on the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan with uses concentrated primarily in industrial parks. And the uses consist of light manufacturing, assembly, research, and development, et cetera. In the land use plan, the project site is zoned industrial general, consistent with the BBCP designation. The industrial general zoning is intended for light industrial uses and manufacturing operations as well. So the proposal, the concept plan proposal itself encompasses lots four and five, but this larger development is located within the Pearl East Business Park Planned Unit Development with lots, including lots two to ten, under the same ownership. The PUD approval from nineteen eighty-nine allows shared parking, open space, and lot area throughout the site. Currently, lots four and five consist of one building each, so looking west is forty-eight, forty-five on lot four, and then looking east is forty-eight, seventy-five on lot five. And then there's shared parking in the middle. It's all surface parking, and this is where the building is being proposed. These are some of the other buildings that are located within that business park. They're mostly technical offices. And as you can see, they're pretty similar in terms of the architecture with the brick and glass. In terms of the surrounding uses for the surrounding uses within a half-mile radius of the proposed development. To the west, there is a medical office building with ground floor, restaurant, and hotel as well. Further west is the concept plan proposal that was before Planning Board on thirty-six, seventy-five Walnut, which was also a life sciences building. To the north is auto sales and auto repair uses. Directly to the east is the Cottonwood Grove Open Space, and then to the south is another industrial office park, which is the east three industrial park. This is what some of the surrounding uses look like. The internal street is Pearl East Circle, which is internal to the larger development. There is the open space to the east, and then some of the auto dealerships to the north. In terms of access, there are transit lines accessible less than a mile from the site along Thirtieth Street, Arapahoe, as well as Foothills Parkway. The site is also bounded by Pearl Parkway multi-use path along the north of the property line and the Boulder Creek Path along the east. So as mentioned before, the proposal is for a life science and office building. Per the applicant, the expected tenants consist of biotech companies typically requiring lab space and office space, but heavily leaning towards the lab spaces. The building will remain flexible to accommodate broader research and development or tech office tenants as well. The plan proposes a cohesive building design with clear corners and a generous amount of glazing. The building materials are a mix of brick and glass. Their use of glass along the entrance defines that main entry, however, consideration should be given to activating that public realm near the entry plaza. The applicant is also requesting a height modification. The proposed height of the building is fifty-five feet, not including the appurtenance. The allowed height in industrial general zone is forty feet. There is a rooftop mechanical proposed above the fourth floor. Per the Landy's Code, there are six circumstances in which a height modification can be considered through a site review without triggering community benefit requirements. So the applicant would need to demonstrate that the proposal meets one of those criterias, particularly number two, which is that the properties within the IG Zone District, and the height is necessary for a manufacturing lab and other industrial processes. The property is also impacted by the Hundred Year Floodplain. In terms of the project stats, the building is proposed to be one hundred and thirty-nine, three hundred and thirty thousand square feet with two levels of below-grade parking. Proposed for total of one hundred and forty-three parking spaces provided. There's a rooftop patio. And there will be bike parking as well, and the uses, as mentioned before, will be law offices, labs, biotech, research and development, et cetera. Moving on to the key issues, the first one is whether the proposed concept plan is consistent with the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan. Staff finds that the proposed concept plan is preliminarily consistent with many of the goals, objectives, and recommendations, particularly policies related to redevelopment of sites while preserving industrial areas and uses. And then a full analysis of the policies will be done at the time of site review. The next key issues regarding the height, mass, and scale of the building. As mentioned before, the applicant is requesting a height modification to allow the height to go up to fifty-five feet. The mechanical screening on top or the mechanical equipment on the rooftop is considered an appurtenance, therefore cannot exceed sixteen feet in height. The Pearl East Business Park in general does have approved buildings that are fifty-one to forty to fifty-one feet tall buildings with four stories, making the proposal generally consistent with the campus. However, with the building height modification request, staff finds there's perhaps room for enhanced design to decrease the perceived mass of the building. The mechanical screening, including the exhaust equipment that you see there in the image below is actually over sixteen feet. The applicant would need to revise that to meet the code. And the general screening for the other buildings in the PUD or in the business park are smaller or appear to be smaller and not as visible. So that concludes the presentation. If you have any questions for staff, I'm happy to answer that. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see, Sarah, your hand is up first there.
Thank you. I have a bunch of questions. I'll try to get some that are all in the same realm, and then we'll do the ronde de la. So in addition to the shared parking and shared open space that are part of the PUD, is there anything that we need to understand about a PUD that impacts this development, this proposed development?
I can't think of anything else. The only other thing would be that lot area, so the applicant, if that the project moves forward, would need to go through a subdivision in order to eliminate the law line between lots four and five, since they're proposing the building over that law line at this time.
Okay, thank you. So just a thought. So then the the in the I want to talk about intensity standards, if you don't mind. The way the applicant has calculated open space includes a hotel, the hotel, which is owned by a separate owner. So I have my first question is, do they, does the applicant, is it allowable for the applicant to use open space that's for land owned by a separate owner as part of their calculation for open space? And then the second question is, does that calculation of open space, the twenty-nine percent include or proposed twenty-nine percent include parking lots? The existing.
They would need to include usable open space, which I don't think parking lots would be considered under that. And Charles, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think they would need to not include the hotel, since that's not being included in the parking calculation either for the open space requirement.
Yeah, that's correct. Only property that's located within the same PUD can be used for those calculations, so anything that's outside of it wouldn't be fair game as far as the calculation goes.
Okay, so I will wait until we hear from the applicant about what the actual percentage of open space is given those limitations. So thank you. And I will have more questions, but I'll wait till we've gone around.
Okay. Laura?
Thank you. I have a couple of questions that are related to the community benefit provision in exchange for the height that the applicant is requesting. I'm a little bit confused because I thought I read in the memo that the only way this project could get the extra height was by providing community benefit in the form of a capital impact fee that would go towards permanently affordable housing, and I that's not what I heard in the presentation. In the presentation, Shabnan, I think I heard you say, and and I might have misread the memo, so I was reading it quickly, so I might have misread that. But Shabnan, I think I heard you say in the presentation that they could get the height because they're in an industrial zone if they can show that the height is necessary for the the industrial processes that they're planning to host. And then I also read in the applicant statement that they felt that the open space and landscape improvements provided the community benefit for height, so that's three different potential justifications for why they could get the extra height. Can you help clarify, Shabnan, what what actually their options are for getting the extra height that we should be considering?
Yeah, definitely. I'm not sure if you can point to where you might have read that in the memo, but through the site review process, there are six circumstances in which the applicant can receive a height modification without triggering community benefit requirements. And that's, I believe, section. It's a nine-two-fourteen. And the one criteria that they could possibly fit under would be that would be the one where they're in the industrial zone, and the height, they have demonstrated that the height is required for the lab spaces or manufacturing or the different industrial use that they're proposing.
I and and I'm sorry, I didn't have time to look it up before this meeting. I'm in California for a three-day workshop, and I'm running around, but I thought that was pegged to buildings that were only two stories. I didn't think that they could get that exception if it was more than a two-story building.
So I think the statement reads as or statement.
Or, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, I can point to the page in the packet. It was on page thirteen of sixty-eight where it talks about a height modification. And in the second paragraph, under height modification on page thirteen, it says, "The concept plan proposal as designed would only be able to meet the criterion that allows for a height bonus for projects providing community benefit consistent with requirements of section nine dash two dash fourteen, et cetera." And then it says, furthermore, going down into the following paragraph, "The proposal could provide an important community benefit by payment of an increased capital facility impact fee that would help fund permanently affordable housing in the city."
I'm sorry, I'm trying to pull up the.
That's okay. It's in the in the packet, page thirteen, under height modification.
I want to ask, is that paid? The packet got updated, I believe, and my packet is seventy pages. So.
That's the one I'm looking at.
It's page fifteen of seventy.
Okay.
Apologies, I must have pulled down the packet too early.
Yeah, it is fifteen. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so and again, I'm looking in the wrong packet, but I was looking at the underheight modification, the second paragraph. The last sentence in my packet says, "The concept plan proposal as designed would only be able to meet the criterion that allows for a height bonus for projects providing community benefit consistent with requirements of section nine dash two dash fourteen." And maybe I'm misunderstanding what that means, but because it sounds like they could also get it from this industrial provision.
Yeah, and it may have been phrased that way because that hasn't been asserted at this point in time that that was going to be necessary.
I'm sorry, Helen, it wasn't asserted. I'm sorry, Helen, it wasn't asserted that which would be necessary.
That the height would be necessary for a manufacturing, testing or industrial process or equipment.
Ah, okay. Okay, uh, thank you for that. But I am assuming that, that what the, the applicant says. In the, the packet in their applicant statement where they believed that landscape and open space improvements would. Provide the community benefit needed to get the extra height, that, that that's kind of a nonstarter.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. I'll, I'll pass on to the next person.
So, I, I just before we go on from that, I think this is really important and fascinating. When I read the packet and I appreciate Laura, I, I don't mean to interrupt, but I appreciate Laura pointing this out. And the inconsistencies there. I read the packet and I thought they have to pay. A, um, the impact fee for the community benefit. So in, in asking staff to clarify this. Under the current design, I know it's preliminary, but they would have to pay their impact fee to receive the additional height. Per the code, is that correct?
Charles, can you speak to that or, um, hello?
I am trying desperately to pull Muni Code up and my computer is locked, so I'm gonna turn my camera off and see if I can.
Well, the, as, as Shabnam explained, there is different ways to get there. To get a height modification and in an industrial zoning district. It's possible to provide community benefit. In accordance with the standard for that to get a height modification, but there's also an opportunity. Uh, under the standard that Laura mentioned, if. A building has two or fewer stories or the height is necessary for a manufacturing, testing or other industrial process or equipment. And, um, tell me if I'm wrong or not on this one, Shabnan, but I believe that. Hasn't been asserted at this point in time that it would be necessary for manufacturing, testing or industrial process or equipment. That's correct.
That's correct.
But it still could be because we're only in concept review, right? There's multiple ways that they might choose to pursue height.
Yeah.
Correct.
I, I just want to say that I hope that if they do go that path, like that they provide something pretty convincing because. Just to say, well, we speculatively could have a tenant that might need this height. To me is not a very convincing reason why we should go from a standard of forty feet to automatically everybody gets fifty five feet if they speculatively could have some equipment that might need it.
Yeah, and that, and the planning board would make that finding.
At site review.
Yep.
Okay, uh, very good. I think George was, uh, going to, uh, ask some questions.
Yeah, thank you. Um, I'll, I'll do the same and just try to focus on one area. I've, I have lots of comments, but I'll revert, reserve and questions for the applicant, but I'll reserve that for that period. Question for staff was, you had mentioned the presentation. There are, um, buildings adjacent that have, uh, uh, forty one to fifty one feet tall. And I wanted to understand sort of, I, I'm looking at, um, apologies, I'm looking at the same packet that Laura was looking at. So I'm looking at page eight. Of sixty eight where it shows, um, there's a cross section of the building. So it might be two pages advanced in the, in the updated packet. And it shows a building four eight, four, five pearl circle on the left and four eight, seven, five pearl circle on the right. And unfortunately, it's, the print is so small on the height of four eight, four, five. Um, and it looks like it's measuring from the ground to the top of the mechanical. And I'm trying to see that number. What is that number? Is it forty one?
Is that of the proposed, is it figure five that you're?
Figure eight.
Gotcha, okay.
And it's, it's the building, that's existing building to the left of this building.
Yeah, I believe that's either forty. It's maybe it's forty three. I can't read it.
Four, yeah, it's difficult to read. Um, and that appears to be measuring. Not from the bottom to the top of that building, but actually from the bottom to the top of the mechanical. Is that correct?
That's what it looks like. Yeah. Um, when I said the fifty one foot building. Um, they're on lots eight and nine, I believe, of the business park. Um, that's where they received a height. Kind of modification previously.
For what does there, do, do you have a, um, I guess, for consistency purposes, right? That's. I guess the question is sort of what is their mechanical shrouding look like on the top of those buildings?
Yeah, um, let me pull up. I think there's some in the presentation.
Cause it's a, it's a, it's a comment which I'll get to, but you know, this.
Yeah.
This looks like more like a seventy foot building to me with this, the scale of. The, um, mechanical shrouding.
There are buildings to the north and I'm trying to pull up the building. Make sure my screen again. So this building for eight, eight, eight per pearl is, I believe, directly south of the site. And if you look at it from an aerial view, there's mechanical that's kind of housed behind this slightly sloped roof.
And so that's the one that you measure to fifty one and is that fifty one to the top of the roof line? And basically, and it's, that one kind of looks more akin to the last biosciences project that we saw on Walnut where they.
Right.
Uh, included the mechanical within the roof line.
Right, I can find the exact height of the, the ones that received a height modification and.
That'd be great. Yeah, yeah, we don't have to, um, that, that'd be great. It'd be great to understand when, when, when this comes back. To look at it from the buildings in the surrounding area to cap, to, to demonstrate. How this mechanical shrouding on the other buildings has taken place, what the absolute heights of these things are. And then to give us some percentages of what we're looking at. So if it's one building out of ten. That's a fifty one foot building and the others are forty versus if it's seven buildings out of ten. That would be helpful to understand as far as, um. Giving us context. Um, and I can't help myself make one comment similar to Laura's, which is. It, I, I find this fascinating because we're, we're, we're kind of neophytes of the life sciences. But we just spent time on a life sciences building that was two stories and they, they needed. All this extra space in their floor plates. I think their floor plates were like twenty feet tall or higher. Because of the types of labs that they were doing and it wasn't just. Office. Um, so anyways, I'll save the rest of my comments for later. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, Lisa.
Yeah, I, I feel like I'm about to, um. Reveal that I'm, I'm struggling to read some maps here, but, but I think the location is interesting because of the proximity to, uh. To why I think of the, of, of, as the T VAP or Boulder Junction and especially phase two. I don't know exactly where we're at with phase two. Um, I won't bring up. Rail and trains right now. Um, but the proximity to that and then also the East Boulder Sub-Community Plan. It, it's just in a very interesting location. And I think a part of, um. And it's light industrial. We're seeing a lot of change over in light industrial where we're kind of. Seeing a shift, you know, toward these, um. I don't know what to call it, class, class A, uh, you know, biology suites or something, um, you know, and away from other industrial uses. So it's a really interesting site. Um, I think by and large at this phase of concept review, there's nothing in it that jumps out at me. Um, I agree with a lot of what other planning board members are saying about what. Um, we're going to want to see when you come back. You know, if you're saying you need extra height, um, you know, if you could give some specifics about what you mean by that, what, you know, is it hoods? Is it venting? What do you need? Do you need it throughout or just for certain kinds of, um. You know, managing whatever it is that's happening in the actual labs. If you're setting it up as lab space. Um, that would help us as opposed to just blanket like, we need the height, you know, that's less convincing for us. Uh, and then, you know, I, I think the early concept, I'm, I'm curious to see what other folks have to say, but the very early concept of the review of the, uh. Design, I don't have a lot to say about it. I'd be curious to see if ML has anything to say about it. Um, yeah, but yeah, I, I, I just think. We may pay more attention when it comes back partially because of where this is in the city and the fact that it's kind of in this area that's changing over in its proximity and overlap into. Other areas that do actually have, uh, community plans, um, for them, but by and large, it seems consistent. And that's where I'm at on this guy.
Can, can I just clarify that this area is within the East Boulder Sub-Community Plan? It is not within an area of change within the East Boulder Sub-Community Plan. This is an area that was deliberately kept as light.
Light industrial.
Yeah.
Totally. I, I just think it's interesting. I, I'm glad that we made those area plans and that the TVAP. I don't know where the TVAP's at, but that that's coming forward just because we, so much of what we end up deciding on right now is in these areas and that's why. Yeah, and it's still light industrial, but it's a very different light industrial than we have sometimes had in the past. So it's, it's interesting to see. Overall, I think it's consistent. Um, I agree with what staff has had to say.
Okay, maybe, uh, uh, I, I have a, a couple of questions also that I'd like to insert in here. One is to ask staff what the significance of the fact that this is a PUD. Is in terms of what the sorts of conditions and constraints on development might be that. We haven't explicitly thought about yet, uh, as a function of its being a PUD. And I'm thinking specifically of in addition to height and architectural, uh, character. The, uh, the fact that this will have some impact on the total parking availability for the rest of the. Office development in the PUD as well. Uh, and I'm just trying to. To understand the significance of those concerns.
Um, yeah, I'll just speak to that, that parking portion. So right now they are showing that they meet the required parking for the entire site. And I can have those calculations up. Um, and I think in terms of the restrictions, the PUD. And, you know, what was previously approved, I think we would take a closer look at the time of site review. And Charles, I don't know if you have anything you can add to that.
No, I think that's well said, Shab. I mean, a, a PUD is really just kind of a different vintage of a site review. Um, and I'm not seeing any, you know, previous conditions of approval that. You know, would preclude them from redeveloping, you know, this area of the site, assuming that they can meet all of the other standards, parking, open space. So I, I'm not seeing anything in the PUD that, um, would be a barrier to entry as far as. Uh, a partial redevelopment of the site, assuming that they can meet all the other standards at the time of site review.
Okay, thank you. Sarah.
Uh, thank you. And if I just might remind everybody, we're still asking questions of staff and we'll have lots of time to discuss amongst ourselves. What our take is on, on the proposal, um, and for feedback for the applicant. So. I have a question for staff about the projected new daily car trips. The, it says thirteen hundred and sixty five net new daily trips from the, uh, on the surrounding roadway network from this. From the projected building. Um, I couldn't tell when I read the material whether. This net new daily trips number is based on. Trips during the number, whether it's based on a, um. A constant from during COVID or pre-COVID. I'm just a little unclear what those numbers are and how to contextualize them.
So I think that'd be a great question for the applicant's consultant and just the preparation of the study. But as my computer wakes up here, I'm trying to access it, but a great, uh, a great question for the consulting team.
Okay, thank you. And then one more question which has to do with, um, it kind of relates to car trips, which is. When you actually read, when you read, when I read the application or the concept application. There's all kinds of other renovations proposed for other buildings in the PUD as part of this. Um, and I'm just curious from staff's perspective. Are all the calculations that are in this proposal? And will be in the final proposal that comes back to us for site review reflect. All the changes and renovations, um, that are for all the buildings because it's four eight, 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 four, nine, 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 four, nine, four, oh, and four, seven, eight, oh. Have all kinds of renovations proposed for them as well. So I'm just, and all we're actually looking at today is this new building. So I'm kind of. A little confused.
I think our ask moving forward from the applicant is that they consider all of the campus planning that's being done. Particularly any additions of floor area that may increase the intensity on the site. The way that I understand it is that. I think that those upgrades that are planned are really just more modernizations and are not going to be. Um, any net changes as far as additional office space goes, but that would be, um, our ask from the applicant moving forward is that they consider. You know, kind of everything that's in motion on the campus, not just that's in isolation.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, Laura.
Uh, question for staff. Uh, you talked in the proposal about, um, if the extra height was granted, that you would ask them to consider. I, I wasn't sure if you were talking about decreasing the actual massing of the building or just doing something to decrease the appearance of massing of the building. And I'll tell you the reason why I'm asking, so it's kind of a related question. Is this idea of one of their options for getting the extra height is paying a capital impact fee. And so if they were actually to, and, and I'm about to betray my ignorance in how that fee is calculated, sorry, still trying to keep up. Would decreasing the massing of the building, uh, some change or lower the amount of capital impact fees that they pay?
I, I'm not sure of the answer to that yet, Laura.
I think it could though, a smaller building. Could impact the fee.
Okay, and so were you asking them to actually decrease the massing or just to do something to make it look less massive?
I think the comment was more so, um. Decrease the perceived mass of, of the building.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, but good to know that if they did actually shrink the square footage of the building, that that could impact the capital impact fee if they were to go that route. Thank you.
Mark.
This is a short, simple one, I think. Um, during, uh, Shabnam's initial presentation, she mentioned. That the building was within a mile to, uh, Thirty Street and Arapahoe. In terms of transit, uh, accessibility. Is that, that distance of a mile, uh, is that anywhere in the code where it says? Something beneficial? Do, do we, do we refer to that distance? That I, we, we common out, commonly refer to first and last mile, but is that anywhere in the code? That, uh, might affect building design allowances, et cetera, in terms of a mile to the, to those, okay? Uh, and when you referred to that. I assume you were, uh, using as the crow flies measurements, a, a radius of a mile, okay? Because actually this particular location is very circuitous if you are on the ground and want to go from. That place to over to, uh, Arapahoe, east of foothills. It's a, it's kind of a circuitous walk around to get there. And it ends up being like a mile and a quarter. So anyway, I just wanted to clarify that. I'm done for now. Thank you.
ML.
Did you say ML? I heard Bill. I'm like, where's Bill? Sorry. Um, yes, question for staff. So I, um. Understand that, uh, you are focusing on the concept plan review. The guideline, the characteristics for the site, but I'm curious about, um. There's a requirement for the statement describing its five A. Techniques and strategies for environmental impact avoidance, minimization or mitigation. Did you look at that and how, where does that? I didn't see it. What about the environmental impact? What about the environmental impact of this building?
Um, that's not one of the key issues that we've presented, but it is something that the uh, applicant will need to provide details on and demonstrate during the site review application.
Particularly with regards to the energy code.
So I'm looking at concept plan review information and it's five A. I'm I'm thinking that it it's saying that a written statement that describes in general how the proposed development meets the title, city plans, and policies and addresses the following. Would not that have been required for this?
Yeah, it was included on page forty-three of seventy from the applicant.
Oh, so it'd be in the applicant presentation?
Yeah, well, there um, ultimately, they have to respond to the criteria. So in their application, um, they include
About that?
They included a statement that was uh, on page forty-three of seventy, the packet, but you know, I mean, I'm sure that they can speak to um, what their plans are as far as uh, environmental impact mitigation.
Right, I, well, yeah, I didn't, um, I'll I'll go look at that. And and just a follow-up on the P U D question. Um, as the project is subject to the entire P U D or is part of the a bigger uh, property line, how, uh, I'm guessing that this um, new square footage uh, without seeing what the P U D, are the P U D requirements or P U D? Um, yeah, the P U D requirements for FAR.
Correct.
Are they the same as the cities or did they make their own or how does that work? Because the P U D generally makes its own regulations. Is that not correct?
It can in this, in the um, case of density, though, it has to be in alignment. Um, you know, with the underpinnings of the comp plan and Shab probably knows better than I do what the max FAR for.
The, yeah, the allowable FAR is uh, point five.
Five.
Mm-hmm.
And I think that that was established by the underlying zoning.
That's correct.
And um, we're within that?
Yeah, their FAR, including the proposed building, is point four three right now.
Great. Um, I think those are my initial questions. Thank you. Thank you so much.
George.
Thank you. Um, quick question. So I was looking at the project description and also reflecting on Shabnam's presentation, which was great, by the way. Thank you. Um, you had mentioned the inclusion of um, office as part of this. And I'm still struggling with the definition of light industrial and office. And I believe, I I I think it was when we were, I'll go back. It's kind of interesting from the standpoint of the Walnut project that we looked at. And I remember Charles specifically saying that there was no hard and fast definition, that that the office was generally viewed as sort of an ancillary or a component to the light industrial rather than the majority of it. And at least in the project description and as as, and I'm seeing sort of as the floor plate heights. Um, you know, the project description starts off by saying it's a combination of office leading with that. Um, and then the floor plate heights suggest much more an office type use than a lab type use, at least from my understanding of how these spaces work. So the question are, what guardrails does the city have as it relates to protecting sort of a a wolf in sheep's clothing of uh, class A office masquerading as lab space to get approved? And how do, how do, how do we as a city and how do you as staff work through that with the applicant to truly understand what's going to happen here?
Yeah, I appreciate the question, George, and we're learning just as much about the different variations of life science uses. Um, you know, as they come before us, but you know, ultimately, when we have detailed floor plans at site review, we're going to have to scrutinize them and really make a determination as to whether or not professional office is truly the principal use. Uh, and we'll look at the floor plates. We'll definitely look at, you know, the breakout of spaces and the operational characteristics, but you know, this early in the process, uh, we I think have just as many questions for the applicant ultimately on you know, what the operational characteristics will be as the design moves forward. So I know that that's kind of a non-answer, but as we get more detail at the site review phase, it's something that we're going to have to scrutinize and kind of go back and forth with the applicant on it as it just the percentage of spaces and how they're going to be used and really making sure that we're assigning the appropriate principal use to the property.
Appreciate that. Thanks. Thanks, Charles.
Sarah.
Thank you. Okay, so two things. One is just a follow-up to ML's point about environmental concerns. Um, Table six-one actually notes that smoke, vapor, dust, odor, fumes, noise, or other environmental contamination has to be confined to the lot. Um, and uh, this project presumably has a smoke stack much like the one if from the Walnut Street project. And so my question to staff is, and I I think we're going to get the same answer that Charles just gave, which is we will know more as this project develops, but I'd like to know how staff um, tracks or evaluates a project like this vis a vis these kind of environmental impacts.
I think um, I guess if if we would classify it under manufacturing uses with potential offsite impacts, um, we do have mechanisms through which um, it Charles, is it the, the letter from um it's not an engineer, but.
No, it's typically, it can be a letter from an industrial engineer.
Yeah.
Um, you know, that we get submitted to us as part of the site review process so that we understand the sorts of emissions. Um, you know, that are going to come from the site and either how they're going to be scrubbed or contained. Um, and what their plan of action is, and then that's typically integrated into the approval. That's where it it lives on.
Okay, um, when we get to the conversation part, I will say I I did some Google research on life science waste products, not not a pretty site. Um, so my last question, which um, I just would like some insight into the floodplain issues. So it looks like about a third or maybe half of this building sits on a hundred-year floodplain. There was mention of a potential upstream flood mitigation project, which you all responded to by saying you can't take that into account when designing this project because sequencing, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Um, but I'm wondering if you could provide us with some more insight into the floodplain issues and specifically, do our regulations allow for underground or below s- below s- below grade parking in a, in the hundred-year flood zone? I just, I don't really know. I couldn't quite figure that out in our code.
Um, I can handle the last question first. Um, we can do subgrade parking in the hundred-year floodplain for commercial uses. Um, so that's something that exists throughout the city. Um, as far as the existing conditions on the site, we wouldn't be able to approve a project based on work that hasn't been done yet. So if there's upstream improvements that haven't been executed or completed, we can't consider those. Um, I think I might have missed a part of your question, Sarah.
Oh, it it was really just um, to understand more fully uh, what the floodplain issues are for that um, site uh, and what the implications are for the development, the proposed development.
It looks like of the map that I'm looking at here in Shabnam, please correct me if I'm wrong. The specific area of the site has some hundred-year impacts um, and some five hundred-year impact, so they will need to elevate the building and flood-proof.
That's correct.
And does, does elevating the building give them opportunity for additional height? Like, what is that? What are the implications?
No.
Right thing?
Yeah, they have to make sure that that's integrated in the overall height of the building. They don't get any additional dispensation for having to elevate because of flood.
Okay. Those were my questions. Thank you very, very much.
You bet.
Okay, I'll I'll follow up on uh, on Sarah's question about parking. Uh, are there any special concerns about how many levels of or how deep the underground parking can be? Uh, uh, and there I'm uh, thinking not only of flood uh, concerns down there, but also the impact on water level in the neighborhood and impacts on the local vegetation if pumping is required to to draw down the water level to avoid uh, uh, filling in the lower level of the garage.
So from a regulatory perspective, they'll have to comply with all the city's kind of pumping and and discharge regulations. As far as the design goes and the impact, I would probably defer to the applicant's um, consulting team on that this evening. We don't have any kind of level of detail at this point at concept plan um, about whether or not um, you know, they're going to have to pump groundwater in order to accommodate um, the parking garage at this point, but if they did, uh, we have very specific standards that, you know, we have a lot of examples downtown, for example, where we have multiple levels of subgrade parking where the groundwater table is very high. So how that gets treated and discharged ultimately, um, I think has to be consistent with the city's regulations as well as the state's um, uh, ultimate discharge permitting. But um, you know, maybe a a question for the consulting team tonight to see how far along they are on their uh, research.
Okay, uh, just to to pursue that. So the same regulations that prevail downtown with the multi-level parking would would be uh, found here as well.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Other questions? I have another one, uh, and that is to ask staff about its opinion with the proposed uh, lack of any sort of entrance or door on the north side of the building, uh, you know, to on the street side. Uh, and wondering both about the aesthetic and the practical aspects of 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 that. I'd be interested in staff's opinion about that.
I think since there is that, um, I think they show it in there. Plans, one second. They're maintaining the connection towards the the north of the building. I'm just trying to pull up the architectural sketch. So that is something I think we can encourage the applicant to look at, um, just to provide better circulation. Um, and I think they'll also be talking about um, circulation on the site. See. Right.
I I guess my question is, is what staff's opinion is regarding both the, you know, the functional aspect of that as well as the aesthetic uh, along Pearl Street itself. How how to avoid it from looking just like a wall with windows in it, but without any doors or access to the street itself?
Yeah, I think it looks like, um, you know, to me that programmatically, the building has been, you know, obviously oriented toward parking and the portica share that's on the so we have a south side of the building. Um, I think that there's a number of treatments we could explore with the applicant um, to study the that's in Pearl Circle elevation. Sorry, my computer is moving so slowly. It's making it difficult to bounce between elevations here. Um, and what sorts of treatments, you know, we may be able to explore with them. It doesn't look like they're proposing any access to the building from the Pearl Parkway, so I think that would be the north elevation.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but.
Yes, that's, that's my observation also, and my concern as well.
But we've seen that before in other buildings like the Google flagship building, and I think that there are ways to animate that space, at least in the daytime and in the evening. Um, without necessarily having building access there, but um, from a programmatic perspective, again, I think that that may be something for the applicant to consider as they um, you know, continue to advance the design of the building.
Okay, thank you. Are there uh, further questions of staff? I I have an additional question too, and that is pertains to the height and the special height arrangements that can that can be uh, made available in the industrial area. Uh, where it talks, where I think Shabnam mentioned that with the two-story buildings, there can be arrangements made for additional height if there's a functional need for it with the two-story building. But is that even relevant here where they're talking about a four-story building?
If I'm reading that code section correctly, um, it is an or statement. Um, so it's in the, it's in the industrial zone or um, industrial, sorry, let me pull this up. So the building is in the industrial general industrial service or industrial manufacturing zoning district and has two or fewer stories or the height is necessary for manufacturing, testing, or other industrial process and equipment.
So, so it's an or statement, so the two or fewer stories then is is irrelevant to under those circumstances. Is that correct?
That that's how I'm interpreting that.
Okay, thank you. All right. There's no further questions of staff. We'll uh, move to the applicant's uh, presentation.
Great, and I am just going to promote our applicants to panelists. It's like we have Danica and Gina. John.
Okay.
Danica, well, but is there anyone else joining you besides Gina and John?
Yes, we should have, um, Chris. SAR, so Dan Rosnick and
And Charlie.
And Charlie Smith, and I I don't know if Cody's here from JBA.
Okay, I don't see a Cody.
And then is there a Dan Rosnick or Chris Shears? SAR.
I did just promote SAR.
Thank you.
Uh-huh.
Okay.
Okay.
Well.
And I'm, do you want me to present my screen or were you, we shared our presentation with staff. Will you be presenting it for us?
Um, you are cer- it looks like you have the option to share screens, so if you would like to, um, go for it.
Great.
Okay.
Okay, we're here to learn more about what you're proposing here.
Great, and you're able to see my screen?
Yes.
Wonderful. So, good evening. Thank you so much for the opportunity to present our concept ideas to you tonight. I think we listened to a lot of your questions and recognize this is very conceptual, and so we look forward to a really robust discussion about expectations and code requirements to move forward. Um, and we hope to answer many of the questions. I'll do my best to try and address a couple of them as I present, but we are, would love for you to, you know, redirect them to us and hopefully we can go through the technical aspects of our project. As Shabnam described, the proposed concept includes a new innovation building to replace the surface parking lot. Um, we will also discuss, as we alluded to, the overlay plans for the entire industrial park, which include a lot of smaller improvements to really in- increase and improve the place-making, mobility, sustainability, and experience signage, et cetera, of this very dated office park, industrial park. And so we we will touch on those in the presentation from Beacon and and hopefully to talk about the different processes involved with all these multiple projects in a complex industrial park. And tonight I am joined, um, as I just um, brought them into the meeting by uh, And tonight I am joined um as I just um brought them into the meeting by uh John or Beacon. Um unfortunately, Elizabeth Payden, who is a project lead, couldn't be here at this meeting tonight, but we have Gina Goroschio. And then we have John Gambrell from Gensler, who is one of the architect, project architects. We also have Dan Rosnick. And Chris Shears and team from SAR, our civil engineer is JBA. And our landscape designer is Norris Design. The current land uses, as Shabnam described, are light industrials spread over multiple buildings. Um there's really strong adjacency to Boulder Creek and open spaces, and so a lot of the concepts that we'll be discussing both with this building and the overall campus improvements include really connecting to the overall system, open space, and also inviting the public to be part of this um office park and not just an auto-oriented environment. The PUD is um many several decades old. Um it includes a lot of uses, a lot of has have been a lot of amendments. And you know, with this site review, we do hope to amend that um PUD to really bring this this site, this project, this building into the current energy code, the current expectations around mobility. Parking, um electric vehicle storage, electrification, energy code, et cetera, so all of those will be required as we move into the site review process. Our hope is that this project will both preserve and enhance the light industrial nature of this property. It is a research and development facility. I'm not an office building, and so we can go into how those uses are um envisioned within the building. And I think just with height, I I I know this is a big discussion, but I wanted to clarify that the first criteria that we are intending to meet is that. Um number six under nine two fourteen, which is payment of the additional linkage fee, so with any bonus floor area, that one point four three percent. Additional linkage fee would meet the community benefit requirement. Um we haven't actually proposed whether the industrial use needs additional height, I think that um I'm familiar with the other project you're talking about, and at this point, our proposal is really to pay that additional community benefit fee to achieve the height and and ultimately meet the site review criteria, and I'm sure there's going to be many more questions along that line. Now I will pass it on to John to talk about the some of the improvements and introduce the architecture for the project.
Thank you, Danica. I did want to just open it up, I didn't know Gina um wanted to introduce Beacon in any way. If her.
Sure, thanks everyone, um I appreciate you taking the time this evening to be with us and to to help us review this project. Um it's very important to us. We um bought Pearl East, let's see, Beacon is based out of Boston and has been in business for seventy-five years. We um thoughtfully develop and manage and operate buildings. And are very excited to be in the Pearl East um community in Boulder. We purchased the building in June of twenty twenty-one. And um look forward to continuing to be a part of this community.
Great, thank you Gina. So I'm gonna just take a a couple of seconds here, I know it's not necessarily tied to the immediate project. But I know we were talking about it, and you definitely know about a number of these things, so we're gonna elaborate on a few of the other elements that we're currently working on. Across the campus. Um so the first thing that you see on this slide is some highlights, and we'll go into into detail here in a second. But these these three areas marked with number threes, um forty-seven, eighty, forty-eight, eighty-eight, forty-nine, ninety-nine are three buildings that we are doing modernization projects for um improving the mechanical systems and really bringing them up to being able to help support. Um kind of this new breed of life science as well as office tenants that are existing on the park. You go to the the next slide. So we're, there's also a move, I'm sorry, back one, thanks, Danica. Um so then we're also looking to do a large um. With this focus on sustainability, a large solar canopy um installation. Um to the magnitude of providing one point six um megawatts of solar. Electricity to the site to offset on a significant amount of energy use across on the campus. Next slide. We're also looking at um bringing um. Um mobility connections onto a broader basis um by partnering with B Cycle, um and we've identified two. Tentatively two locations for e-bike share hubs, um kind of in the central spine of the park to help aid in commuting both to and from and around the immediate um neighborhood. Excellent. This building forty forty-nine oh nine is actually really um interesting, again, we're we're doing a modernization, no addition of space um on this building, but we are um taking the bottom two floors that are existing office space um filled with tenants that has become vacant. And we're filling them into amenities to serve the whole campus, um including a lounge, a fitness area, bike storage, bike repair. And a conferencing center. We also have kind of this food amenity cafe type amenity. Um that will open up to outdoor seating immediately adjacent uh to this building. And that is one linkage that we are hoping not only will users of the campus, but also be an amenity from a lunchtime provision um to neighboring properties. Um next slide. And this is kind of a, it's currently a surface parking lot, um but we want to be able to accommodate kind of a dual use to where for lunchtime events. Um we could bring uh food trucks uh to this area and providing outdoor seating and kind of a fun um play on the asphalt, again, part of this community building um exposure to bringing um an opportunity to eat onsite or um across the street um or to nearby um properties. Next slide. And then this is another um significant landscape amenity that we want to focus on, and this one is right adjacent to the Boulder Creek Trail. And we're really, um again, we're not um adding any space, but trying to augment it with areas to sit um and eat outside and be outside while also being adjacent to the to the Boulder Trail. And then the last slide I have is is we're also focusing on this central spine. Um to bring landscape improvements to it to help just breed more mobility um through the site and make it more of a pleasant experience to walk from um side to side, especially as part of this attractor to get to this amenity building that's centrally located. And I think with this, I'll turn it over to Chris Shears to um get a little bit more uh involved into the design of the building.
Thank you, John, and as you can see, this building is part of a larger campus and the improvements associated with that that are that are planned. It's important to emphasize the fact that this building is planned and designed uh to accommodate innovation associated with life sciences, research and development and technology. There are particular requirements such as floor plate dimensions associated with lab space, structural systems. Mechanical systems and service unique to these users. I'll begin with this first floor plan. Uh this proposed building replaces, as was suggested earlier, a surface parking lot. Note the building is set back from the parkway consistent with the existing buildings. Service access and a down ramp to the low-grade parking is located on the east end of the property. An entry drive partially covered provides a convenient drop-off for visitors and deliveries. Ground floor functions include lobby, bike storage, enclosed and screen. Loading and of course, tennis space fully transparent to the street. This first floor is slightly below the current flood protection elevations of flood roofing. Of course, uh measures will be will need to be implemented. Next. Excellent. Uh these building elevations communicate to make the street frontages. Uh in this property, there are no secondary elevations. Note the proposed new structures emphasize base, middle and upper level uh setbacks to generally align and scale with the adjacent existing buildings. Next slide. The basement building is essentially glass, fully transparent. Second, third floors are masonry matching the brick of existing buildings. The top floor is fully glazed to lighten its appearance and scale to surrounding buildings. Corners are open to provide views. Uh interestingly, this is very similar to the approach that we took uh at Pearl East in a very similar orientation. Next, please. These are a series of eye-level views, beginning with Pearl Parkway. Early circle, uh note the covered drop-off, uh let's put it next, we're not the covered drop-off and third level roof deck and solar array. Looking west with the existing building foreground, looking and looking east. We include this last slide. Next slide, whoops, these are the two views from the uh street. With the existing building in the foreground. Next. From the other direction. And then this slide, uh we include this only just indicating the reference point from which the height is measured. Uh Shab covered this very well in her presentation. Uh and finally, uh we're enthusiastic about this proposed building as a fresh compliment to the campus community. Uh and the important improvements as presented by John. We uh look forward to your feedback and comments in this concept review. Uh thank you very much.
Is. Is that uh, does that conclude your presentation?
That concludes our presentation, so we look forward to your questions.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh Sarah.
Uh thanks, so I'm gonna go back to the open, the usable open space question. Um in the concept application, you uh calculate that the open space is uh twenty-nine percent. Um and you include the hotel, which apparently can't include. So I'd be curious in the proposal that you've just walked us through, separating out the hotel and separating out the parking, which you're also not supposed to use in that calculation, what percentage of your campus is actually open space? Usable open space.
Uh I'll have to come back and um get that for you specifically. Um because we did use the whole PUD, we thought we had to um as a part of that. Um I actually believe we did calculate it um under the guidelines that we provided. Um so based on that, I I'm not expecting a significant difference in the overall open space percentage, but we are gonna wanna take our time to make sure that we factor, take that land area out of the application and keep it to just the property that's owned versus the entire PUD.
Laura.
I have a couple of questions about art, um which is very consistent with the vision of the East Boulder Sub-Community Plan. That there would be in these funky industrial spaces, uh a lot of public art or a fair amount of public art. And I did, I was very pleased to see in the uh concept plan submittal that uh art is mentioned a couple times, and so one place where it's and uh mentioned is that uh in the entry area, it says it could house a public art feature. Uh is there more that you can tell us about that at this time, and then I will have one other question for you?
So I think without, again, you know, a lot of these questions are really gonna get drilled down into um our site review, but I believe we have a partnership with B Moka to identify public art installations throughout the campus. So not only in the buildings but outside the building, and so putting those in places where both the public and the users of the campus can enjoy them, and so we you know, would love to hear your feedback on how that can be best integrated and what type um of arts, and I don't know if anyone has anything to add um to that.
Danica, I can add, um this is Gina, um we we have we have partners with B Moka and we're actually finalizing some of the interior pieces. Um be rather robust inside the community space that John had previewed, um and then we'll go tier of the exterior pieces, so really welcome your feedback um on that program, we're really excited about it.
And if you can recall, uh the uh the Hill Hotel uh is utilizing uh B Moka to to uh provide and select uh the art for that project as well, so B Moka is now getting involved in in a number of projects, which I think is very exciting.
Great, that's good to hear, um and 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 maybe this uh has some overlap with my other question. Uh in that shared campus amenity suite, it talks about a local art program for that shared amenity suite, and is that the same thing that you were just talking about, or is that something different?
We are previewing, um we are only hoping to portray uh and preview with local artists. And then the space will have maker space as well, so that we hope to program that and have um you know, um different groups come in and interact with the community and the tenants and what have you with with, you know, whether it be um pottery or or whatever, speaking engagements, et cetera.
Okay, um I I I did not mean for this to be a gotcha, and I'm not trying to make a gotcha in any way, but I did notice that in the trip generation analysis, it said that the amenity space won't generate external trips. And I'm, you know, trying to square that with the idea of uh an art program that would attract outside folks. Um and and maybe you're expecting them all to come by bicycle and on the creek path, which would be amazing. Um but maybe that's something to look at for your um trip generation analysis for the site review. So I'm very excited about the idea of um connecting local art with your campus, and I really appreciate that you are you are making that happen. That's the end of my questions.
Okay, Mark.
Uh first, just a clarification, are are we as a board now both asking questions and making comments? Or are we just just questions?
Right now, we're just uh we're just asking questions and we'll have our discussion subsequently.
Okay, all right, great. Um. Does does our code prescribe the screening material um or limit the screening material, because I find from a design standpoint. The screening and the and the possibility of stacks even going beyond the screening. Um but I I find screening to be this this thing that we uh that we have people do, and I'm not against screening, but we we have this nice building, and then we have a ten, twelve, sixteen feet on top of it of many times something that doesn't feel incorporated into the design. It's it's not particularly attractive, it doesn't make for a nice, you know, uh top to the to the cake. And um so my question to you is, you know, have you um uh you feel like uh the screening as, I know this is all preliminary, but uh where have you gone, what what have you evaluated with screening, make it make it uh something other than kind of the big sheet metal wall that uh many uh many buildings near this one and around the city uh use.
Chris, did you want to address that?
You. Uh well, uh Mark, uh you hit a soft spot for for me, because I I do believe that I made uh this comment many times, that the screening often calls more attention to the mechanical equipment uh than just the mechanical equipment, and I think one of the best examples of that is at the intersection of of twenty-eight and Canyon. Uh so next time you drive up twenty-eight, you can look at that, but but we are required to screen it. Um and uh I think what you're seeing now is what we anticipate the screening might that what might be necessary for the screening, uh but there are certain uh obviously, when you when you're you're involved in the detail of the design, uh you always adjust that slightly, so what you're seeing now is provocative, I guess, and maybe uh it served its purpose because it provoked your comment. Uh but it's always an issue with buildings, and I think we can just say that we will handle this as sensitively as we can. And John may have a comment about the And John may have a comment about the particular requirements for, for the Hill Science.
No, I think you, you covered it, Chris. I think we, we will, we always want it to be integrated into the architecture of the building as much as possible. So I think Chris's answer suffices. I think as it relates to the uses, I think we will, there has been some further development in our approach to something. So I think ensuring that we maintain within the requirements of the code for the apartment, the rooftop penthouse, won't be a problem.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I think more directly to answer your question, Mark, I don't think the code says how it should be screened. It, it has allowances for the height and the percentage of rooftop. But certainly, site review criteria will push us to, you know, meet the architectural expectations of, you know, the whole building as a whole, I think. And the screening, I would consider that part of that in terms of high quality materials and massing and scale. So I think it's both and, it's the code and the site review criteria.
Okay, I'm, I'm going to move on to a couple transportation questions. And I want to say that your presentation answered many of my questions or addressed some of my concerns. But I, I did want to ask you on page 43 of 70 of our packet, under your concept plan criteria, B, travel demand management. It reads, "The city of Boulder provides an excellent transportation options toolkit for developers and employers to help reduce congestion, et cetera, et cetera." I, I'll phrase it as a question. Are you planning on relying on this, what I consider to be an outdated, never formally adopted and incomplete TDM toolkit that is not official by any standard anywhere as far as I know of? Or will you be providing a, your own TDM plan more based on the site geography? The location or in fact, the, the distance? I consider this site to be really sadly distant from good transit connections. It's great for bikes and pets, but it's, it's really pretty poor for transit. So are you relying on that TDM toolkit for your TDM plan?
So that, great question, Mark. And no, that I agree with you. I think we're exploring lots of mobility. I think it's important both for the owner of the property and, and the community at large. We did meet with the, I'm trying to remember the name. It's with the Chamber and the City, the Boulder Connections and, you know, looking at micro mobility.
Transportation connect, Boulder Transportation Connections?
Yeah, so we did already have a meeting with all of that staff to talk about what, what micro mobility could exist at this site and how do we get people on that last mile? I think similar to how it was explored on the Spine Road project, like what is the unique characteristics of the site? And how do we create the best possible solution? So no, the city's TDM kit is a good starting point. But we are certainly going to figure out what makes sense here. I think there's a really great access to the trail system. And, you know, other places like the bike park and, you know, other things in the area as well as how do we get close, closer to the regional transit, which is not right adjacent. So we'll continue to have those discussions. We have not flushed that out yet, other than working directly with B-Cycle to install those stations, probably in the more immediate future.
Great, thank you. And I'll just conclude, I know it's, it's still question time, but I'll just conclude by saying that your, the presentation and your tying in of the other buildings and trying to make it more of a campus with more amenities that will keep people from doing what happens in Flatiron Industrial Park, which is they drive in in the morning. They drive out at lunch. They drive back after lunch. They drive out in the evening. And, and, you know, having some internal trip capture with amenities, cafes, eating areas, whatever. And I know Spruce has, I know it's not your, I don't know if it's a part of your ownership, but, you know, Spruce Cafe is located there now, and I hope they stay there. But I think additional amenities like you've described will help, help a great deal. So I appreciate you noting that because it takes care of a lot of my other comments. So thank you.
Thank you.
George.
Well, Mark, that was a great segue into my questions because I think what the applicant presented there with the campus, I'm not sure we can take that into consideration unless that's included in the design that they're putting forth to us. I want a clarification on staff. Based on, beyond what we're looking at in this design review on this building, anything else that the applicant puts up as the, as the rest of the campus? Can we consider that at all, a proposal that would be included in this? Or is that something that could change down the road? Because it, it doesn't appear like they're tied together at all. That was, that was a question to staff.
Yeah, so staff, if you want to respond to it, now's the time.
Well, I think I'll wait for Helena Pine if she has any strong thoughts about it. But, you know, typically, anything that's included in the site plan as part of the site review, you know, is supposed to perpetuate. So it's considered part of the, the approval. So I think it is something that we can consider if I understand that the question correctly.
Yeah, to, to, to clarify and then let Helena chime in. But so, so the buildings and their, their concepts around those things can't change once this goes through the process, this one building goes through the process?
It would have to ask to formally amend the site review. And then we have some processes in the code that lay out how you can do that.
So I, I'll try and address this. I think we're struggling with this as well. You know, there's some shorter term solutions that we really want to implement. A site review can take two years to get through the process. And I think a lot of these things we would like to do now. So hopefully by the time we get to site review, we can show you that they're underway or actually built. They're not promises. They're actually in their commitments, I think, most of them. I think we're still working that out. So this is a complex, we've, in our pre-app, we, we talked about both of these kind of larger campus projects. And then how do we do a discrete site review? And how do we accelerate some of these mobility improvements and amenity improvements? While not increasing square footage, while not changing, you know, the dynamic of the site. I, I hear you about the amenity space and maybe bringing in additional traffic. We'll look at that. But the goal is to get some of those in the ground ASAP. While we work on this larger site review. So it's a bit of a conundrum that we've been grappling with. And we can, want to continue to discuss that with the city to do that.
And I appreciate that, Danica. And we do have process mechanisms by where we can amend the existing PUD to help support some of those things in advance of this project. I think we'll just ultimately want to be thoughtful about how the campus master plan is really going to play out. But, you know, we can continue that conversation. We, we have the mechanisms by where we can do that. We just don't want any, to put the cart before the horse, so to speak.
And I think some of those would be done through probably minor mods, you know, to add some of those enhancements and landscape enhancements. So we're just adding to, not taking away from. So I think that's where the process is really important to all of us.
That's helpful. Thanks, thanks, thanks for your input.
Amanda, it looks like John Gersell dropped off and needs to be re-promoted. We've lost our chair.
Promoting him now.
Thank you.
Mel, did you want, have some questions for us?
In the meantime, I'll just take over. George, did you have a second question first?
No, no, go ahead.
Okay, Mel.
Thank you, Sarah. Good evening, folks, and thank you for your presentation. I have a number of, of questions. And I think that this idea of the whole PUD versus the discrete building and its impact are going to be folded into some of my questions because, so first off, I'll start off with a votable takes. So you showed a substantial array that is not on this specific site. And I think you said it would provide a significant amount of electricity. So what are we talking when we say significant?
I think it's 1.6 megawatts, I believe. It's, it's a lot. And so they're working Unico Solar. Unico is the property manager and they have a solar company. So there's been a lot of iteration on how to best electrify and, and create renewable energy for the campus. My understanding is that would probably be, again, possibly a minor mod to get that going sooner rather than later. But it would provide electricity to the entire, a renewable energy to the entire campus. John, you probably know more details.
Now, thanks, Dan. I was fumbling with my mute button. So you were right on the, the size of the solar array.
What percent, can you translate that to the percent of, of electricity that will be provided on site?
I've got a stat of half the campus's electrical energy use that's been put in front of me. As it relates to that, again, that's not being done through us. It's being done through Unico Solar. And, and this team isn't in the, on day to day on that. But that is a stat that's, has been put in front of us.
Fifty, 50%?
Correct.
Thank you for that. Um, so I'll, I'll proceed with talking about, so the, the interest that I am looking at is the techniques and strategies for the environmental impact of the building. And so my questions are going to be kind of, kind of surrounded by, by that major intent. I'm looking at, and I'm hearing you talk about the amount of glass on the building. And relative to the glass, I have two, I have two questions. If this is intended to be a laboratory facility, I wonder how the transparency and the amount of glass serves that client base? It seems to me that labs need kind of control. And the amount of glass was something that you emphasized in your presentation. So that's my first question. And then secondly, concerning the amount of glass as well. What about the environmental? You've got a lot of north glass and I think you've got a lot of south glass. The east and west are more those brick with the apertures. So I'm just, so I'm curious about the glass on two. How, how does the building function with that amount of glass, given the client base you're looking for? And what about the glass and the environmental consequences of having that amount of transparency?
So I can jump in on, on a number of these questions. The first question I'll say, as it relates to kind of this private or public biotech company and in this office space and glazing. Kind of the current trends are that windows are leveraged in many of those lab type operations. So being devoid of windows in, in a lab product anymore is not, is not necessarily the norm. So just want to let you know, as, as we're designing these buildings in other markets and, and around town, we tend to have windows in them to some degree, as you see in this proposal. So that is not out of context for that. From the energy consideration, you're right, there is a fair amount of glass. It's something that we're going to be looking into as we develop and get into the energy performance of the project. Just because it looks like glass doesn't necessarily mean that it's floor to ceiling glass in areas. We can, we can do things to put insulation behind glass on, in some areas while balancing the exterior. Look and feel the building while still getting the performance of the building. Beacon has a strong corporate goal to be lead gold or better. So we are going to be studying on how can we make this project through USGBC's lead program, lead platinum or gold. As we continue to evolve further into the design process, not to mention meeting and exceeding the, the energy baselines that are mentioned in code and Boulder code as well. Daylighting is another mention that we tend to look at and implement in a lot of projects. So that is one of the benefits of the glass. Is we do look at the, kind of the coatings and everything else on the glass to make sure that we can let in the visible light and try to mitigate the, the heat gain that comes along with it.
Thank you for that. Now that, so we looked at the flood plain and the building is in a flood plain. So I am, it's hard to tell from the drawings. It looks like there's a lot of paved area. Non-pervious surface. So if you can talk about what your thoughts are for the precipitation and the flood potential, given that we will probably see greater frequency with this kind of thing, even the big storms. That area of the, that eastern area of the property that is adjacent to that park, even in a significant storm, a regular summer storm, it gets pretty well flooded. So can you talk about water?
Sure, I'll take the non-engineering approach. It, you know, the, the lot, a lot of properties are in the flood plain, obviously, in Boulder. This is in the 100. So it is a, a parking lot now, so it is impervious at the moment. So it, I actually think it might be adding a more pervious area. I'll look to Cody to correct me. We are adding water quality, I believe, to this building and the site. So, which I don't believe currently exists. Some of these old parks don't have those water quality features, especially discharging in Boulder Creek. So the, you know, obviously we'll meet the code. It'll be floodproofed and/or elevated to meet the, the code requirements as well as the garage. You know, would have the requirements. So I know, and we, I know there's a question earlier about groundwater. So these are all things that we will study. So it's a combination of meeting the code and hopefully improving the existing conditions, which, you know, aren't designed, weren't designed for these larger storm events, I think, when it was built in the 80s. Cody, give anything to add from a engineering standpoint?
Yeah. Hi, everyone. This is Cody Gratney from JBA. We're the civil engineer on this project. So I think you nailed all the things that I was gonna hit on, Danica. What I would say is it is completely impervious today. It's a parking lot. And we're actually going to be reducing the imperviousness, which should help out on the flood concerns. We also know that the city is part of another project to mitigate the flood plain on this property over next to the Conscious Bay property, just south of Pearl. And so that would actually eliminate the flood plain on this property when that happens. So we're looking to that also to help with mitigate what, what could be some flooding. We also have very little flooding depth on this property. It's only a couple of inches in this area. So we're really seeing this as a fairly minor flooding area in terms of the depths and, and safety concerns. In terms of your question about the area to the east, I think you're referring to the wetlands over there to the east of the property. And yes, tho, those do flood. And then that's a city-run proud project and it does flood. And that's what it's meant to do.
Thanks, Cody. Just to clarify, so the, the flood project and our project will not hinge on a future project that is also underway. We have, Cody and I happen to be working on that initiative as well and hopefully the other with the city. But right now, what happens is the, the slew over tops at the railroad tracks. It hits the railroad tracks and then backs up and comes around. So it creates this really shallow flooding for a lot of properties along there. And so Conscious Bay, who is the owner of like where San Diego Brewing is a little bit to the west of us. I've been working with BNSF, the railroad company, the ditch companies and the city. We've actually done the Clomar to do the conditional, conditional letter of map provision and, and gotten, you know, general agreement from the railroad, the ditch companies and the city to pursue a mitigation project. Now that has a life of its own and Now that has a life of its own and, you know, funding of its own and requirements of its own. But the goal is to. Probably it's just the overtopping of the railroad tracks, which causes all this sheet flooding throughout the entire area. So. Um, we will plan for our condition without that mitigation, without that happening. But um hopefully that is something that will continue to make progress because it will also increase. The safety at the rail um by, you know, having this overtopping isn't a great condition um for the broader community at large.
Thank, thank you for that. Um, I I will note that. You mentioned, I'm looking at the site plan, so I'm chicken, get off to the side here. Um, that as you're building in an existing parking lot. Um, you will actually be reducing the amount of impervious area. I I'm not sure that I concur with that. You're putting a building in which is not going to be pervious. I don't see a lot of green. Um, I think there's a little strip around the around the building edge, but. Um, so any anyway, just relative to that, I think that the heat island will still be there. It will just be up higher. Um, something to to think about. Um, my next set set of questions, and these will be the the last ones I have. Is I do appreciate that you're looking at how to reuse the whole campus and um. How to populate the parking areas or some of the parking areas. With activate them for social um uses such as the food carts or the. Um, casual dining areas and that sort of thing. Um, so two questions. One is, so the number seven, that's the one I was worried about with the flooding because that looked like it was right in that area. Well, I've been in that parking lot after a storm and it it's all flooded up. So just something to. It's on the property. It's in that number seven area. But um. When you take over the parking areas for other uses. How does that impact the overall parking requirement since it's across the whole site? Um, are you accommodating that with added parking in the new building? Or was there always an excess of parking or um? I I'm, I like the idea of reusing and thinking about about the parking areas as something other than. Then see of asphalt, but I'm just curious as to the impact it might have to any parking requirements for the whole property.
Um, it's a jumped in on a couple of stats. Um, basically with this project and with the removal of the. Um, surface parking lot where the new building is going to go, we're going to reduce the parking ratio. Um, but it's still going to exceed the code minimum of two point five um. Um, per thousand. Uh, Danic always gets on me because it's one per four hundred square feet um of built area. So um, but we're still going to be slightly above um that. That one parking lot where the food truck courts also tends to be where nobody parks. Um, so it tends to be where it's the farthest away from a front door and those types of things. So some of this is how can we, um especially in this local or this current need. Um, while trying to activate the site and the overall context, how can we. Um, bring some amenities to the site and create these kind of things, especially when the parking demand is lower. And then as um time evolves, the the um intent would be that it maintains and becomes a fixture.
Are are the photovoltaics on existing parking as well?
They're on canopy structures above the parking.
Oh.
Reports.
Got it.
Yeah, so I think the overall strategy, this part, this park is overparked. Um, and so, you know, balancing that is really important, both with this project. And I think with all the other projects you're seeing, it's, there's way too much parking. Um, so the overall parking will be reduced both with both kind of. But I still think there'll be plenty of parking, um and hopefully with the mobility enhancements, you know, we can even get that down even further.
Right. No, I absolutely appreciate the the big, the big picture and how you are looking at. Um, reusing the the asphalt areas, which is is a good thing. You didn't ask for a parking reduction. So I was just curious as to how that played out, but I hear you. There is a sea of parking out there. So um, those are all my questions and I think just, you know, heads up when it comes back for the site. Uh, review. Um, I I'll be looking for the climate impact um and how this building. You know, it'd be interesting to see what happens with all the glass. It it'd be interesting to see how that building itself can manage. Uh, the um stormwater, stormwater on site. And those kinds of, I understand it's a whole big campus, but I think uh looking at. The specific building and its impact to its adjacent area will be um. Something that I'm going to be concerned about and looking at. And relative to the height. Um, I think it'll be interesting to uh in, I know that in the next iteration. You'd be required to actually um. Identify the heights of the buildings within a hundred feet of it. So I think that the buildings that are close by are actually at about forty feet. So it'll be interesting to see where that conversation goes without a tenant. I'm understanding this is a speculative building. Uh, without a tenant that would um put forth specifications for the added height. Um, I am. Looking at what's around and what's there and given the height of the mechanical. That um if a height variance is is. You're going to have to do some convincing that it's really warranted at this at this site. Thank you for answering the questions.
Okay. Uh, other questions of the applicant? I have uh one brief one, and that is to inquire. Uh, whether you consciously want to exclude access from Pearl Street itself to the building. Uh, that's what, that's what the plans show. And I'm just wondering if if that's really your intent.
Uh, I guess I'll take that. Uh, John, I I think that, gosh, in most, most of the projects we do. Uh, there's an entry off of the street, the major street. In this case, the context suggests uh that that really wouldn't be. Useful. And the the main entry is on the south side of the building, which is another street. So we've actually got two streets and we think it's preferable to have the entry uh on the south side that faces inward to the. To the uh. The rest of the project. So I understand your concern, I understand your comment, but I I think the context here suggests otherwise.
Okay, well, thanks for your response. Okay, well, I think that concludes the uh presentation and questions for the applicant. So thank you very much and uh we'll bring it back to the board at this point.
John, do we need to um have a public hearing?
Yes, we do. Um, and that's what will happen now. So uh. I think what we'll do is uh have our public hearing. I'm not sure how many hands are raised. And following that, we'll take a break uh and come back and discuss this.
Yeah, so anyone participating or or watching right now that would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand and. Um. We will go ahead and allow you to your three minutes. Looks like we have one hand raised so far. Paul Coleman.
Okay.
And Paul, you should be able to unmute and I will put a three minute timer up for you.
Okay, great. Thank you. Um. Well, I'm finding this all very fascinating. Um. I have a lot of thoughts. Uh, you covered a lot of things, my concerns of, you know, the electric use and the. EV charging, probably the e-bike charging also. Um, and then being in the floodplain. Um. You know, this is an existing business park. It's, we're not going to make it go away. We need to deal with it. I realize you have a lot of competing interests and concerns. It's a lot of compromise. Um. So one thought is district heating. Since this is a a big area, lots of buildings. Um, you know, maybe solar thermal or ground source uh heat pumps. That would uh serve the whole area. That would be a very interesting project. Um. So maybe both of those. Um. Uh, another concern, I mean, this being a business park, you know, we have big buildings, big parking lots, little strips of grass in between. Their heat islands and their biological deserts. And, you know, we're not going to turn this back into wilderness. I understand that. But whatever can be done to reduce the heat island effect and to introduce biodiversity into the area. I would greatly appreciate. Um. So. That's uh. That's what I've come up with. I've I've a lot more questions than I have answers. Um, you know, the P D thing really puzzles me. Um, I think what I, from what I understand, the developer establishes P of D to maintain property values. But how it evolves over time and how the new owners deal with the PUD is total mystery to me. Um. And it seems like, from what I've heard today, that it can be changed, but I don't know how that, how it gets changed or why it gets changed. And I'm really curious about that. But if it's not appropriate to talk about that at this point in time, I understand. Uh, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Amanda, do we have any, any other hands up?
Yes, it looks like we have one more right now. Um, Lynn Segal. Oops, sorry, one second. Okay, Lynn, you should be able to unmute and I'll start a timer for you.
Something I always have wondered about, uh, and this can be reflected in the issue of Pearl Street and the restaurants. Every time there's a different restaurant that comes in here, they clear out. All of the insides straight to the landfill and put in new. And I just wonder why these large scale buildings. Can be spec when, why can't you go out and find the client? Life Sciences Company and design the building to their specifications. Um, not that these are going to change over a lot. I mean, I suppose they sometimes do, but. Why shouldn't they have a custom building? I don't, I kind of don't get that. I'm sure maybe you have some responses, but I don't know what those are. Um. I wonder if you can go gas free. And there is, you know, my son has one of these vans with everything in it. And, you know, there was a little cover above the, for the perforations in the top of the van. And it fell down when he had the magnetic induction stove on and it. Smoked and could be a potential fire hazard. So. Um, magnetic induction is not a panacea. They should have auto shut off for. I don't know how you do an auto shut off or a non-functional, you know, pan on there. But I don't know how you do magnetic induction heating, you know, for large scale stuff. Like these labs. Um, but. There are ways to do electric resistive heat with massive solar backup. And fifty percent is not really cutting it all. Um, because you're going to have a lot of demand from these kind of buildings. Um, if you're not using gas, but I'd still question, why aren't you? Or or why isn't the city requiring you to be a hundred percent gas free on these buildings? And just put up piles and piles of solar um and do reactive. Um, energy and micro grids and that kind of thing. Um, I'm also concerned about the floodplain. And the per- the permeability. Well, you know, they say, oh, it's already asphalt. Well, so let's dig up the asphalt and we restore it to a wetlands, you know. And the ca- term campus, you know, the thought of a CU South campus. And these campuses, CU's already invaded into this area. These life sciences buildings are part of literally the CU campus. So we definitely don't need the CU cell.
Thank you, Lynn. Okay. Uh. Amanda, are there any others who? Are raising their hand? I don't see any.
No, not at this time. I don't see any either.
Okay, that concludes the public comment section of this hearing. Um, I think we'll take a break now. It's now eight oh seven. We'll come back at eight fifteen. So see you then. Okay, let's see. Are we all back? Oh, we have M L and Mark who. Should show up soon. There's M L. Okay. Well. I bring it back to the board for discussion. And since this is not a matter in which we'll be making a formal decision. This discussion, I think, is what will be of major benefit. To the applicant and to staff to hear our thoughts on this. So we'll keep that in mind. George.
I'm going to start it. Sort of a high level from my understanding of the site. And its potential impact on Boulder, applicant's presentation so far. For, just to level set us sort of. Going back in time a little bit. So back in 2015, this site was transacted from W R Reynolds from 85 million. To, to Unicop. And then again in 2017 for 140 million to Broad Street. And then again in 2019. For 190 million to Beacon. Now you've got a developer in front of us who needs to monetize this asset and continue to build on its value. And. They have what I think they presented to us tonight. Is pretty egregious. A 70 foot tall building. That's a giant box. And I feel like, you know, Chris had mentioned. In the presentation when he was talking about. The screening for the mechanical. As a provocative type thing when, when Mark had brought it up. And I, I found this whole development pretty provocative as it stands. I feel like. It's anchoring by the developer to. Put us in a position where we're negotiating down. Instead of having them just come back and say, you know what, guys? A big giant box is not going to work for Boulder and you really need to think it through. I think it shed more light on. How thoughtful for, for me, it should shed more light on how thoughtful the Walnut. Life Sciences Project really was. They really presented it as a life sciences project. They kept within the 55 foot envelope by shrouding the mechanical within the roof structure. Eliminating concerns like Marx or Chris in this case. So that's my overall comment. I, I don't have much more beyond this because I, I just didn't find this to be terribly thoughtful design. Or. That a perspective that, that, that a local could absorb. And I will say one other thing. We didn't get a lot of showing of, of the public. Because I think the public is focused on housing. But these are the types of projects that are wagging the dog, the wagging the dog in Boulder. It's jamming in as much Class A office as possible. And I think it's incumbent on the board to understand. The economics associated with the flips of this property every two years. What this developer is facing to monetize this asset. And the push for to maximize their value. And I'm. All for people maximizing their value. But I think we need to scrutinize this heavily to make sure that the value for Boulder is maximized. As this project goes forward, that they really are more thoughtful with their design. And that we understand how a project like this might impact housing and make sure that we're getting the benefit needed to compensate for it. Thanks.
Laura.
Well, that's a hard act to follow, George. And I, I want to say that I'm, I'm a little surprised by the comments that my, my colleague on the planning board just made. And I'm probably going to comment it from a different perspective. But George, I want you to know that I, I'm listening to what you have to say and I'm, I'm going to think about that. And I think that it sounds like your major. Objections are the, the height and the massing, the size, and that it's a boxy building. So I came into this really liking this project. I think it's in keeping with the East Boulder Sub-Community Plan. This is the part of Boulder that is reserved for industrial use. I'm not going to suggest housing here. Maybe some people were afraid that I would. But I think that the way that the East Boulder Sub-Community Plan. Looked at the community was thoughtful to say, you know, there are some areas that should be mixed use. But we also need to preserve those light industrial uses, including life sciences, which seems to be a. Happening trend right now, that that is something that people want to do here in Boulder. And that is, you know, one of the. One of the uses that was identified for East Boulder was, you know, life sciences, medical, that kind of, that kind of use. And if you're going to have, I like the fact that this is infill development, that they're taking a parking lot with a lot of useless, underused, overparked area. And, and turning it into the type of development that is needed in Boulder. And George, I understand your concern about it not being, not wanting to be an office building. And I, I hear the applicant has thought about that and that they're prepared to, you know, come back at site review and talk about the. Kinds of tenants and uses and that it would not be primarily office, which I think is a good thing. I think they've heard that concern tonight. So I like that it's infill. I like that. You know, it is in the part of town that is appropriate for taller buildings and for this kind of use. And I really appreciated Danica's comment that I think is going to shorten this discussion a little bit. Around that the way that they would try to trade for that height. Is through that community development money that, that, that impact fee that would go towards affordable housing. So for me, that is a much easier sell than if they tried to make the argument that. That additional height is necessary for their tenants, for their use. I honestly, this is directed just generally at the development community. I don't know how you make that argument with a four story building. We have to have four stories and they have to be this tall to accommodate the planned use. I don't, I don't understand that. So. You know, you could have a three story building with taller floors. So. So I like the fact that it is that they're planning to justify their height request with the. Capital impact fee. I like the fact that they are trying to make the site more pedestrian friendly, more bicycle friendly. Activate the space with public art, activate the space with some food trucks. This is very much in keeping with the East Boulder Sub-Community Plan concept that you do have these more industrial areas that then become more friendly. To people passing through and more connected for people coming through the area. So in general, I am inclined to like this concept. I could probably be persuaded that. If the building is going to be 55 feet tall, that they shouldn't have such tall. Mechanical space on top of that. I think that there's some discussion to be had about that. But in general, I like the concept.
Sarah.
Thank you both, Laura and George. I am in agreement with George. And I went through this via the key questions, so I will just quickly run through. I think there are some BBC Boulder Valley Comp Plan goals that this is potentially inconsistent with. One is 1 dot 09 growth requirements. Urban growth must add significant value. Not 100% clear. Why a 71 foot tall building does that? When we have seen another proposal come through that is a 58 foot tall building. That is also a life sciences building. I think it's inconsistent with 1.10, the jobs housing balance. The. I looked this up. The median income for life science employees is $91,000 in Denver. That is definitely smack dab in the middle of missing middle. And I don't know where we will house those folks. And we also already have a. Huge housing deficit. I'm not exactly sure what the enriched community benefit component of this is. Again, a 71 foot thing. I don't think we get the 1.43 of affordable housing component for the 16 feet of, or 16 foot tall additional. Pertinence. The commitment 2.24 commitment to a walkable city as Mark pointed out, this is pretty far away from public transportation and. If all the employees live in Boulder and can take the creek path to work, that's great. But a lot of the, there, there is a reason why this office park is located at the intersection of foothills and Pearl Parkway. It's a transit. Rich, a car rich environment. Also. I'm quite, I think much of section four of the Boulder Valley Comp Plan about energy, climate and waste. I'm pretty concerned about the. Commuting prospects. And much as I was concerned with the Walnut project, what the heck is coming out of those smoke stacks? And life sciences waste, which you can do a Google search and there's a lot of plastics that come out of life science waste. There's a lot of. Toxic waste that come out of life science waste. So I just have some concerns about that. And then parts of section six on transportation. I'm not sure that this project would actually do much for reducing single occupancy auto trips, although I do appreciate the. The concept of a food truck court so that folks go there for lunch instead of getting in their cars and going to Whole Foods. In terms of key question number two, which is height, mass and scale. Context, the tallest other, the other tall buildings in that development are 51 feet tall. This is a proposed 71 foot tall building. That is not contextualized. And I'm very concerned and I appreciate that George brought this up and some others brought this up, which is. I realize we're just in concept stage right now, but they have ma, they have proposed a maximally large building. Without having a client. And I don't know how you do a, I don't know how we are supposed to evaluate a. Blanking on the word, a, a building, a spec building. That presumes a need for. 71 feet for lab space. When they don't even know what the, who the client is going to be and it could end up being nothing but office space and. The, we, we're not trying to replace into light industrial with offices. That's what B C one and B C two zones are for. I'm also concerned that we're setting ourselves up for a host of other proposals from other applicants for 71 foot tall buildings. Without necessarily getting much benefit out of that, particularly for housing. I think if you look at the graphic on page 26 of 68 in the old version, I didn't get a new, I didn't get information that there was a new. Docket out there. You can see how much taller and more massive this building is compared to the two buildings next to it. I mean, it just looms, it looms. So. I'd like to see what comes back during site review. Shorter. I'd like to see. I'm, I appreciate that the applicant is talking to the chamber about. Transit options, but that has to really be, the TDM plan has to be really robust and really impressive. And I'd like to know more about who the client is going to be. So those are my comments.
Lisa.
Yeah, I think I'm somewhere kind of between the two. I'm interested to see what comes back when we're actually at site review. I'm not necessarily opposed to some kind of a height modification, but I agree that this is a pretty substantial modification. So. I'd like to see renderings. I think it'd be interesting to see the mass of the building. Perhaps broken up. It is. And again, I know it's very early. It's just concept, but you know, it, it does. It is a little bit of an interestingly clad box right now, which maybe isn't all bad in an industrial area, but. I think there are ways to. Think about perhaps making it, breaking up the mass and kind of looking at what else is happening in that area to help address that. For the height, I think one of the things I'd be interested in seeing is like, how much height do you really need for whatever the use is going to be? And you know, could some of those. Appurtenances be extending up, but not the entire building be that size? And I'm not saying that that would necessarily address any other planning board members concerns, but. Yeah, I, I just like some more information on. Why the height is necessary, exactly how it will be used, and then how that impacts the built form. Again, I, I don't know. I have no way of knowing what other folks have wanted. It might just be that height in general will be a no go, but it might be interesting to have some things that are. Specific parts of the building that extend up and then other things that don't. And it's like an interesting roof line instead of just being kind of this monolithic box. Beyond some of those concerns. And I think you've heard a lot of other questions that'll inform what comes back. At site review, I do think that the general idea of the building, a lot of the, the thoughts and concept that have gone in and so on are, are fine. I think a lot of the questions are going to have a lot to do with, with the height and potentially with the massing. And then with also drilling down a bit more, as I said earlier, I got ahead of myself. You know, just understanding better, how will this be used and, and why is that height needed? And, and how does that inform the built form of the building? So yeah, kind of the same as what I said earlier. I'm curious to see more of that and excited to see the next iteration. Hopefully we're giving you. Enough feedback to go back and. Improve what we see next time so we can make a decision.
Okay, let's see. Mark, do you have any thoughts?
Sure, always. So I, I too fall somewhere between. Between George and Laura here, but I. I have, I do have a, a soft spot for taking a impervious surface parking lot. And, and, and repurposing that as a, as a functional building now. This building is as proposed. With the. You know, the, the applicant did not. Do some of the creative things that the applicant on walnut did, where the building itself. Created some of the screening for the mechanicals, et cetera. Now, I, I realize that that building was not being done as spec. So anyway, I, I, I have similar concerns about the, the height and the precedent. Of sixteen feet of mechanical above a fifty five foot building. So. Now, if it's code and it meets our code, and I have a problem with. The way we specify screening and what we do with mechanicals and how that. Creates good or poor design. That's a whole nother issue, but I didn't, for, you know, for the applicant, the question is. Am I meeting the code? Am I meeting the B V C P? So, all right, there's that. I also have a soft spot for. Contextualizing a new building as part of a campus and, and making that whole environment better. And I realized. That we can't approve a site review. Based on improvements to other properties, even under the same ownership, unless it's, it's memorialized. In that site review process. So if, if they come back to us with these amenities and, and that's, that is a. That's a requirement or reasons for us to approve this, then, okay, then, then that has to be memorialized. My advice. For them is be creative with this mechanical situation, be creative with the screening and, and try to. Make something other than what we've been presented tonight, which is, which is a very tall building. And it is massive and, and boxy. In, in regard to that design. As I reread the packet. It's a little unclear to me, but. I think it is our option to send at this stage a concept review to send this project to the Design Advisory Board. And I would like to see that, see that happen. I think this, this project could use some additional design input to. To improve it. And, and like I said earlier, in regard to connectivity and transportation. You know. I would expect a project. Of this value, when I say value, monetary value, to come back to us. From this team with a TDM plan that, that blows us away. And, and that, because we don't have a formal TDM toolkit. That breeds uncertainty and it breeds flexibility, right? So, okay, you know, the, the developer says, gee, I'm really uncertain about this. You guys have this ancient TDM plan that you never approved. So that makes me uncertain. On the other hand, it gives them a lot of flexibility. And so I would expect excellence. In a TDM plan for a building like this. To, to really take into account its geography and its connection to the creek paths. And I, and, and I would ask. Again, I know this is a, I'm, I'm being like a broken record here, but to take into account. Our, our transportation master plan and plans for intersection improvements and so forth nearby. And I point to the intersections at foothills Parkway and Pearl Parkway. Those are, you know, we have a lot of multi-use paths coming together there. Those connections, you go from a very safe, comfortable, low stress connection on a creek path and across Pearl. East or west of foothills, going north or south, it's, it's, it's really terrible. And there are a lot of families commuting. Kids to school, et cetera, at certain times of day there. That's, that is a, that's a very uncomfortable intersection. People going north and sending off of foothills. Down the ramp and making a fast. Right hand turn on the, going east on the Pearl. So anyway, enough said about that, but I, I want staff to take those things into account. And I want the applicant to really take into account. Their, their TDM aspirations. So that's it for me. Thank you.
Okay. Let's see, who hasn't spoken yet? M L.
Thank you, John. So. I'll just kind of read through my, my list here. Thank you, George, for your. Very clear. I think there was a lot of clarity to what you had to say insofar as how. One might position themselves relative to this project. And also because you added in that monetary component that, you know, is always there, but we don't really talk about it. What's driving some of these, some of these things? And I think the size of the building certainly plays into that, but. So I will. Talk about energy and the environment. I would suggest that. The applicant does not rely on meeting Boulder's quote robust energy code. We do not have a robust energy code, just FYI. The town of Superior has a more stringent energy code than we do. So. Don't use that as kind of the, the aspiration. You talked about lead, lead gold. That's not enough. You know, there are higher standards to meet. And I think if we want to, in fact, take into account what our directives, not just from the Boulder Valley Comp Plan. But from the site review criteria, direct us to. We need to do better. So those are my thoughts about energy code and sort of meeting criteria on that regard. Replacing asphalt with the building. Doesn't mitigate the perviousness. You just move the perviousness, the imperviousness up. There was nothing about that roof that was green or that was capturing stormwater onsite in any kind of a. Environmentally mitigating way. The heat island remains, it's just up higher. So. Again. We have to take. A smarter look at, at what we're doing. And I think that our. Use criteria and Boulder Valley Comp Plan. Both. Hold an aspiration that we will do better. And regards to the height, I, I don't see any driver for a height variance. I, I don't see any driver for a height variance, and I think that will be necessary as we look at this further. So I will speak, I will give you some specifics insofar as at the site review, I'll be looking closely at F X. Which talks about including the natural environment into your project. F X one, which talks about minimizing or mitigating energy use and support onsite generation and reduced heat island. There was a comment earlier about the P U D and how that works. All of your P Vs are in the P U D. So when we come back and review the project and look for onsite generation. It's going to have to be onsite. That building is going to have to do better. It's going to have to become a smart building. And G, G talks about maximizing, excuse me, maximizing the potential of solar energy. Excuse me. I think that. This. The big idea for, let me take a little drink here. I think the big idea for. Activating. The campus. Is really quite delightful. I'm very familiar with that campus. And it feels very suburban, the way it is now. I mean, I think you even described it. That it's. Buildings in a sea of asphalt with some landscape. Some very. It's, it's turf, basically. So it's, it's kind of suburban feel to that campus, I think, to bring some activity into it that would. Reuse some of the big open space. It's a great idea, but that isn't part of the project that we will be looking at, so. Yeah, I, I think my colleagues have covered the rest of the issues. I would not. Be. Proposing that it go to, to, to design review board at this stage. The things that I'm talking about. The, are about building performance. They're not about aesthetics. It's not about how good does the building look? And, you know, what are the materials and how do we make, you know, three floors of, of transparency? Become energy efficient? It, this is about building performance that I'm talking about. So I do not think that at this point, the project would benefit from a, a design. Design input. I, I think it's, it's kind of preliminary for that. And I would just. Hope that the applicant. Takes a look, a serious look at the environmental impacts and begins to. Shape. The building. So that it can respond to the environment in a more proactive and intelligent, intelligently. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. That's a. A, a whole series of very articulate comments, I think, and, and very useful ones. I, I'll just briefly say in an attempt not to repeat what has been said so far, that I think. George's and Sarah's comments were, were very relevant. In addition to the others that everyone else has made. I, I would just summarize without, again, without repeating them, that I think that the justification for the height has not been made. So far, and that one could easily suspect that this is a new offices being. Slipped in under the guise of laboratory space, given that. That. The nature of what has been proposed. So I, I am very skeptical about. About. Approving a, a height, the height that is described here. And that is, I think it was Lisa who made the point that. If we look at all the other buildings in the vicinity, this is, this is far higher than they are by one or two floors at least. And the. I, I, I think that that has not been justified here. The. The other point that I'd like to make, and I don't believe anybody else has made it, is that by virtue of not having any sort of entrance or. Connection with Pearl Street, what we're doing is building a campus that, that in effect winds up excluding the public. And I think that is not what was intended by the applicant, but that is the effect. If there's no direct connection with Pearl Street. So I would encourage the applicant to, to consider that concern. Does anybody else have additional comments here? Laura.
I would just like to ask a question, and maybe this is for Hella or for Charles. In terms of justifying the height request. Do they, are they required by code to justify that they need the height, or can they simply request it in exchange for community benefit?
You know. Go, go ahead, Hella.
Yeah, there. To get a height modification, I think there's two. Careers that are going to have to be made. One, you have to meet one of those six criteria that we spoke about earlier, and one of them could be. Providing community benefit, which can be done through paying a higher linkage fee. However, there also has to be a finding that the building. Is compatible at height with the area surrounding it and the buildings in that area. So I, to me, it sounded like that's what some of the board members were speaking to. In that regard, does that make sense?
It does make sense. So they don't have to justify that they need the height, but they would have to justify that it is compatible with the surrounding environments. And meet one of those criteria, which could be providing community benefit. That's one pathway. They could also choose the other pathway of saying that they need the height for the planned use, but it sounds like that is not the pathway that they are intending to go down, according to Danica.
Yes, and even, even under that approach, there would still have to be a compatibility finding. Because that is part of the general site review criteria.
Thank you, Hella. That's very clear.
Okay, I see. Mark.
Um, I, I wanted to understand, I, I was looking at the packet and I had. I won't say made a motion, but I said, gee, I think this needs to go to the Design Advisory Board. And I don't really understand this sentence. It says, the planning board has the authority. To refer concept plan review proposals to the Design Advisory Board for its opinion. But referral is not required in this case. So. I'm, it sounds like. Staff has made a determination that referral is not required, but. I don't know that referral is ever required so much as. As is within our purview to refer it there. I, I, so I wonder if someone can.
Sure.
Explain that.
You bet. Thanks for the question, Mark. So there are instances where. Design Advisory Board is a requirement. This isn't one of those instances, but the board does maintain referral authority under two, three, eighteen subsection E. To refer projects to the Design Advisory Board.
Okay, so, um, thank you. So I, I'll, I'll just leave it there as, as people make their kind of final or closing comments. I guess our referral authority. Would. Require consensus or a vote. So just be thinking about that. And John, maybe correct me if I'm wrong, but, but I think people should be thinking about that. As we, as we wrap it up.
Yeah, I think that's quite, quite an appropriate comment. So. People, people should be prepared to do a thumbs up or thumbs down on referring to Design Advisory Board. George.
Oh, yeah, just a, just a quick, quick point of clarity, because Mark, you had mentioned. That walnut was not a spec building. My recollection was that walnut is a spec building. And they, they talked about, is, I find it, it's fascinating because we got to see that project less than, I think, two months, two or three months ago. And what was so interesting was. Them saying to meet the, the criteria for the life sciences industry and build, you know, high quality lab space, that they needed these twenty plus. Foot floor plates. And that was like a big, it was a big component of what they were talking about. And so. I, I'd like. When the applicant comes back. I'd like to understand from their perspective. Who they're going to be attracting. In the life sciences category relative to lab space with very, with what appears to be office. Style ceiling heights, if they choose to go that route, or maybe they need to refine their, their market assessment. And take a look at that walnut project and look who they're going after as spec bio, biosciences. Because when this comes back, I'll certainly be looking at that to. Understand, and I'll be doing some research and ahead of that, I would ask the city to do the same, to really understand who these users are and, and what we're really talking about here. Thank you.
Laura.
I, I think George asks a very interesting question, and I, I don't know what kind of labs we're talking about. I assume that, you know, I have a. labs we're talking about. I assume that, you know, I have a a an acquaintance who does laboratory research with mice, and I assume that they don't need very tall ceilings to do that. Um so I don't know what what kind of labs are are being talked about. Mice are very small. Um I do have a question. I do have a question for uh staff. In terms of those surrounding buildings that have been approved for up to fifty-one feet in height, do those also have mechanical on top of that that is screened, or are they fifty-five feet and no mechanical? Because we're talking about the way that it sounds like we're talking about a difference of between fifty-five feet is the cutoff and seventy-one feet, but that seventy-one feet is mechanical. So I I'm just trying to get a uh what is the comparison? If that is one of our criteria that we're supposed to be looking at is compatibility with the surrounding area.
I'll defer to Shabnam on um the condition of the existing buildings, but the maximum height for uh screening and mechanical equipment is sixteen feet, so that can never rise over the roof more than sixteen feet, but um I think Shabi have a better understanding of the existing conditions out there.
Yes. So there are mechanicals um on almost all of the buildings on the, in the um business park.
So that would be a good data point to have for our next conversation on this project is what is the maximum, you know, how tall is that mechanical on those neighboring buildings that are fifty-one feet high plus mechanical? How tall are they actually? That is my question. Thank you.
Okay, uh I'd I'd somewhat related to that. I'd like to to make the point to staff also that uh uh I think Sarah made the point initially tonight. And that is, what is the cumulative impact of lots of these laboratories operating in a in a fairly concentrated area with respect to air pollution? And I'm I'm just thinking, for example, the C east east campus CU uh buildings that have chemistry and environmental studies labs have extremely high uh exhaust stacks uh coming up. I think higher than the sixteen feet probably. And there's probably some reason why they have to be so high in terms of uh you know, diffusing the the nasty fumes that come out of them. And I'm just wondering to what degree we should be concerned about a an air pollution problem at at some point with a major concentration of labs of this nature. Uh and it's, that's not something that I think the applicant has to uh address directly, but it's something that the city needs to be aware of and uh and thinking about. Okay. Sarah.
Oh, I thought I had written the stuff in my notes down before, but I like I said, I did a quick research into the environmental impacts of life sciences and um I do just, this is added point to staff. Um I know there are federal regulations, but I think it's valuable for planning board and then city council to have some understanding of what are the uh environmental, not climate change, because that we, that is something we've already, we already have a sort of a framework to talk about. But these environmental, these other environmental impacts that have to do with um air pollution, plastics, toxic, toxic waste, solvents, all that kind of stuff, which are all part of the um uh according to the little bit of searching I did, um all part of um the waste product that comes out of generically life sciences. And since this is clearly the, as Laura said, the next big wave that's coming into Boulder, um it would be really valuable to understand what it is we're dealing with.
Well said. Okay. Any further comments? All right. Well, I think uh I hope that's useful for the applicant and for staff.
Do you want to do a thumbs up or thumbs down on Mark's suggestion of a design review?
Yeah. Um, all right, let's let's do that.
And actually, John, if I could interrupt, typically, we ask for a motion um when we're uh the board is exercising its authority to refer something to design advisory board. So i- if we could phrase it in the form of a motion, I think.
Maybe we could just do a quick nose count first before we bother to frame a motion. What do you think, John?
Yeah. Let's let's just do a quick thumbs up or thumbs down on whether, how people feel about that, and if there's a majority, then we'll frame a motion.
Can can we comment on it before we do the nose count?
Sure, let's do that.
I I'll just say briefly that um I think that if if one of the major concerns is uh massing and height, and if the design advisory review board might be able to help the applicant reduce those things, then I would be for it.
So, go ahead, Lisa. Sorry.
Go ahead, Sarah.
I I I'm, I don't think now is the time to make that request. There's, this is so conceptual, they they can't even tell us if it's going to be offices or lab work, and I think it's too far in advance.
I was gonna, so sorry, Hella, go ahead.
Yeah, I was gonna say that your recommend or your request could also be that the, when it comes back for site review, that the site review be referred to DAB before it comes back to the planning board.
Do we think that's necessary? I don't know. I mean, I'm I'm not opposed. I love to put design advisory board, but I I I don't know if I think it's necessary.
Mark, uh you initially proposed this. What do you think about Hella's uh suggestion?
Um, I actually think that uh the best time to use the design advisory board is the earliest time that it's useful, that uh we we were tonight, we have a concept review that many of our comments or concerns were about uh height, uh screening design, massing, etc. So we're we're talking about these elements right now. And rather than have the design advisory board uh offer their expertise and guidance at a point when when it's it's much uh the design is much more concrete, I think that uh that the best advice is the earliest advice when it can be incorporated versus, oh, we've already, we've crossed that bridge, we've already done too much work on path A, we can't go down path B. So I I think it's best earlier rather than later.
Laura.
So I think that the dab has been itching to really make a contribution, and and this could be a building where they do. Um and uh you know, I think we're we're describing sort of the uh, you know, the is it too cooked? Is it not cooked enough? When's the right time to go to dab? And so my, if we were going to make a motion about it, I would say the applicant should take the project or the concept to dab at some point before it comes back for site review, and I would look to the applicant to think about when is the most useful time to get that uh input before it is too cooked. Right? When it's cooked enough, but not too cooked, and I would trust them to to do that. Like, as long as it goes to dab before it comes back to us as a site review concept, I would be happy.
George?
I I'm gonna say, I I think it's too preliminary for it to 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 that to happen. It should come back to us first. I it it is I uh kind of reframe my comments at the beginning. I I feel that this was an exercise of positioning a maximized block to us without uh enough thought put into it. And now that they've received our comments, I think they should take that back and be prepared to present it back to us. And then at that point, if we feel comfortable with it, then we should be able to move it forward to dab, and I'd feel comfortable moving it forward to dab at that point. Um I just don't think, I don't think it's 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 baked enough to to even have anyone comment on it before it comes back to us.
ML.
Thank you, John. Um, yeah, I I'll reiterate what I said before. Um I don't think that it's a design problem at this point. I think that it's a performance a- as far as as the concerns that I'm uh raising about the building, um which of course do result in the form. But you've got to go back to the source, right? You've got, what is driving this? You know, George has some idea that it might be the the money. I have some idea that it's being driven. I don't see the environment driving it. And a a design advisory board is not going to press them to get to the source of the form. Um so I think at this point in time, it it's a, it's a it's a I don't know about preliminary, but it's a it's a holistic problem that needs to be solved before uh input about the way it it is shaped. Beyond those environmental or other considerations uh take form. And I think that that happens in the architect's design studio, not uh in front of a board.
Laura?
Okay, this will be my last comment, but I am confused about why we would have them come back to us for a site review where we are supposed to approve or reject it and then refer it to dab after that. So either we approve what they bring back, or we reject it and send it to dab. Is that what folks are proposing? Like dab has no utility until we have rejected the site review? I can't hear you, Sarah.
I think ML summed it up really well. This is a what's drive, we don't even know, they, there's no known function yet for this building. And so therefore, the design is it's sort, I mean, it's, I'm sure it's not meant to be pie in the sky, but that's the phrase I'll use. So they have a lot of work that they have to do with staff to get it down to a building with known uses that meet the code for those uses and meet the code for site review and meet the code for land use and all that other stuff. And at that point, maybe it will need a si- will need design requirements, but it's an office building. It's an office, I mean, it's a, it's a commercial building of some kind. This is not gonna be a great design. This is not meant to be great design. I think this is not the right, this is not the the the, this is not a building that's gonna require dab input. It's just not. It it it's really a question of what its uses are gonna be and how it meets code.
Okay, I'm I'm losing connection here. Sarah, maybe you can take over chair and I'll log in and out again.
Okay.
Hey, John, before you go, are, what's, do you, can you try to quickly say what your thought is re- in regard to referring it, referring it to dab now?
Well, I I believe that I certainly agree with you that earlier is better to get dab input, but I think dab needs uh needs some basis from which to work. And so I think right now it's premature to send this to dab. I think that it would be legitimate for them to review it before we, before it comes back to us as before we deal with this in site review. But right now, I I think uh our comments have been su- sufficiently basic that uh there's so much change that needs to happen to this before it meets our needs, that it would be premature for dab to to even address it. But I I think that it would be useful for them to see it before it comes back to us in site review.
So, John, it seems like you're not actually disconnecting. Um so as long as you're still here, if you
Yeah, I'm I'm still here now, it's
Just connect, I'll jump in, but um as long as we have all seven. So it sounds like there are
Four nos.
Four nos. Sounds like there are four nos and three, yeah, maybe we could do, or we should do what Hella is suggesting, which is to send it to dab uh before it comes to us for site review whenever that is. Um and maybe, John, your vote, you're you're, that's what you're saying, am I understanding?
That's right. I I think Hella's approach is 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 good.
All right. So for the four of us who are nos, does Hella's approach seem like a good Solomonic splitting of the baby, or what do you think?
Would we actually take a vote at that point, or would we have to approve it now ahead of time?
I think we'd have to approve it now. I think, is that right, Hella?
Personally, I'm not prepared to approve it. I I I just, I I it's just so unbaked. Like, I I think what Georgie and ML said is just correct. I'm not at all opposed to dab reviewing it at some point, but I don't know what I'm sending to them. I don't know why I'm sending it to them. I don't know.
I agree.
Uh you know, and and maybe this doesn't matter tonight, but if if anything, that's, and apologies to applicant, I'm I'm sure you did hard work. I'm gonna use a phrase that sounds sort of negative, but if every time we see something half-baked, does that mean we're always sending it to dab? Like, I, like, what is the precedent and what it, I don't know. So I I I'm amenable to sending it to dab at some point. I'm not prepared to make that decision until I see something more baked.
But I'm sorry, before I go to Brad, can I just say the one, the last time we sent something to, the last time I remember that we sent something to dab, it was the Presbyterian Church renovation, and it was a very specific what the heck is that big prow thing that
Everyone's very mad about the ship. I was like, I don't mind the ship that much, but yeah.
So it was a very specific design element. Um and uh and it was already, I think it was already in site review.
It was in site review.
It was in site review. So we've been in this place before where we, something has gone through site review, and then we refer it to dab.
Oh, yeah.
At that point, it's not about mass scale, density, intensity. That that point, it's about like
Designs. I I I think, I think that's what I'm struggling with the most. It's not that I mind sending things to dab. It's a, I'm not sending them, ML said this, and she said, it's not a design problem yet. Like, I'm not sending them a design problem. You know, and yeah. So I, I I'm I'm not convinced by that approach, but I'm I'm one of seven, so.
I just want to make a brief comment. I'm not gonna advocate to send it to dab now. I I that that ship has sailed. I I I think it seems like from my limited interface with dab, but I am the person that attended their last meeting, etc. That we are underestimating or undervaluing dab's input. Dab is not just about design in the in the lim- most limited sense of, you know, G, trim color, and our etc. I think there's a lot of talent on dab. And and that can refer to uh that can make an impact upon uh building scale, sizing, massing, uh all of these things that that we struggled with tonight. And that those are big fundamental items that can be altered most cost-effectively early on. So I I'm just saying that as far as dab goes in general.
I wanna second that. You know, one of our city council members, Lauren Fulkerts, used to be the chair of dab, and just from talking with her about you know, her work and the types of things that she cares about. I believe that carries over to a lot of the people on dab, that it, they do care about environmentally friendly design. They do care about intensity and massing and the public uh interface with the street and all the kinds of things that we care about. And they do it professionally. So, you know, I that, I guess that's why I would be supportive of sending it to them earlier, so that they can make an impact on the kinds of things that we have brought up tonight as concerns for us. But a- again, if folks are not comfortable with that approach, if you feel like you need something more cooked before you send it to dab, but but maybe we could get some input from dab on how they feel. Like, it it sounds to me like they are asking to have more projects referred from planning board to dab. And I guess I would like more information on how they think they can be helpful.
Yeah, Brown?
Yeah, I just wanted to offer uh an observation and maybe some clarity, and I'll ask the staff to keep me honest in this regard, in case I'm misunderstanding, but I believe in the realm of possibilities, there really are only two, if if dab is to be involved in in a case like this. And I say this recognizing, we don't know when an applicant's gonna bring in their their actual site application, right? They could be planning to do it three months from now or five years from now. So there are really only two realms of possibility, either uh asking that it go to dab before they bring in that site application. Or having the site application come to you from hearing, and then essentially remains, saying, we're not gonna make a decision. We're gonna remand it back to dab. They do that, and then it comes back to you. So we can't control that time between now and when they do their their site application. So that's not a control of time period. It's either in the board's um discretion to say, we want this before it comes in, or we're gonna wait until it does come in. And then maybe at that point, if we decide we're not ready to make a decision, we'll remand it to dab. They can talk about it, and then we'll make the decision after we hear back from them. So I just wanted to provide that clarity on on kind of the two options. So I just wanted to provide that clarity on, on kind of the two options i- i- in, in the general realm on all cases that would. Would be your option, kind of moving forward, these types of cases.
Okay, I, I can also note that I, as former liaison to dab. I, I. Agree that they are most useful at an early stage in the project. But they, it's right now. I think it would be premature to send it to them because. We have come with such fundamental. Comments that I think there'll be a major, there should be a major change in the design. But I think it's legitimate for them to look at it before we look at it again to get their thoughts. So my comment would be, we could ask them to review it before we. Deal with it in site review. Mark.
It, it isn't, I, I think what I, okay, this is one of these things where it's like. What I thought I heard Brad just say is we can refer it to dab prior to site review. Which would be now. Between concept review and site review or. We say at site review. We say, yeah, we're not ready to make a decision. It's going back to dab. Those were the, that's what I heard. Brad saying that, Brad, please, like, say, no, Mark, you, you were not hearing me correctly, but that's what I heard.
Yeah, I was just trying to lay out that those are the two possibilities and. Haven't been corrected yet by staff, so I think we're, we're good in that.
But if we say we send it to them. We don't have to send them the concept review package that we saw tonight. We're saying. When you're ready with your site review package. Please take it to dab first and then make any changes based on dab's input and then bring it back to us. Is that, is that? John, what you're proposing? You're not saying send them the concept review package. You're saying. When they're ready to come back for site review, they go through dab before us.
Yes, but I also don't think, I think we should get dab's review of the project and. I'm not saying that they have to make changes according to dab's request. I just would like to get dab's opinion about what we're being presented with. In site review.
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
And I see George has and Mark both have.
Yeah, I don't want to repeat a lot of what people have said. Except for the fact that. What concerns me about referring a project like this to dab. Even after the applicant makes modifications. Is I do think there's, that becomes sort of this incentive. To. What we were presented tonight was a box, like I, I, to, to ML's point, like it's just, it's not a design problem yet. And I, I have, I have very little low confidence that. I, I'd like to, I'd like to see this in site review before we spend dab's time on it because. I, I am concerned that they go through the process and it, and, and by dab commenting on it, it almost becomes a little bit of a tacit. Approval of a, of a snowballing effect of a process that we have no agreement on right now. That's why I would recommend, I'm not opposed to dab commenting on this, but I, I, I think. When we see projects like this in design review, to, to have confidence in that, I, I'd like to see them much more evolved. Than what we got. So that's where I land.
Okay, actually, George, I think you've persuaded me. I, I, I think your points are excellent. So I'll, I'll agree with. You on that.
So anyway, I want to just restate for the folks who are advocating for dab that. I am not opposed. I, I want to see this in a more fully baked form. And then I, I could very easily be convinced at that point that we do remand back to dab. I mean, I think this is an interesting project and I'm curious to see what they come up with. Yeah, so I'm not necessarily advocating against dab involvement. I just, I don't think it's time.
Okay, George, your hand is up again.
I, I'm sorry, it was leftover.
Okay, Mark.
Do we ever, um, again, this is like this, I'm. Procedurely naive here. Do we ever see? Is it always concept review? X amount of time could be a long time, could be a short time and then. Site review. Is it ever concept preliminary, concept review and a, and a revised concept review? Is there ever such a thing or is it just the two steps?
You know, typically it, it's rare that we see and, and thanks for the question, Mark. It's rare that we see more than one concept plan, but it has happened. Albeit rare. There have been times where an applicant team has wanted to, you know, kind of test the waters on a, a more evolved concept.
Charles, correct me if I'm wrong, but. Maybe this was actually at site review though. I think, I think also an applicant. And, and this doesn't apply tonight for this applicant, so don't worry, this isn't about you. But an applicant can kind of choose to withdraw. As well can kind of say, you know what, we're, we're hearing enough and like, we're, we're backing out. We don't even want this and then come back when they're ready. Is, is that correct?
Yeah, we typically would see that at site review. Where there's a decision that's being rendered that evening not to plan concept plan. I think really the essence of concept plan is to get this feedback.
Can I ask another question? Is there any other way that projects go to dab other than we refer them? How else do projects get to dab?
If they're located within the sphere of influence of the downtown design guidelines that for example would require a trip to dab.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Sarah.
City council can also. So right, Charles?
Yes.
Staff can also refer to that.
And there you go. So there's lots of different ways.
Okay, I think it's time for a thumbs up or a thumbs down on, on the dab referral now. One, two, three, four. Five. All right, I, I think we've decided not to refer it to dab at this point. That's the conclusion I draw from. This discussion. So I don't see any point in, in a, in a motion. Unless you want to formalize that. Okay.
I do, I really want to say that this was helpful though, and just kind of everyone kind of getting an understanding of things to, to be helpful, at least from my perspective. I can.
Yeah. Frankly, I, I would like to offer a suggestion and that is to the applicant. I would invite them to come with another concept review after they've reconsidered the project in light of our comments. I think that. Might be very productive for them and for the city as well. But that's something that the applicant and staff can decide how to deal with. Any other comments here? Okay. We'll bring this portion of our meeting to a close. Thank you. And. Good luck to the client, to the applicant. At this point, we'll bring it to matters from staff.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Actually, only simply want to thank you as always for your service to the community. So thank you all very much. Happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. Matters from the board? ML?
Um, I'm just curious, and this might be a matter to the staff. Did we set a retreat? Did that get set?
Yes. I will, I will send you a calendar appointment and confirmation, but we're set for October 3rd. And we were just trying to finalize. The start time around. Eleven AM, which I know. For some of you, the middle of the day was tough. But we will just solidify the timeframe on October 3rd.
Thank you.
Okay. It's good to get that finally defined now. I can also mention that. Sarah and I will be attending city council meeting on Thursday evening. Where they're having a study session on the. Revised code and. Zoning characteristics. That's, that really deals with the subcommittee that Sarah's been very active on for several years now. So.
Right, with the site review criteria, which if you all remember was like. The second meeting that our new members participated in, uh, which was an over, sort of overwhelming. Flood of information. And, and then those, and then the use table subcommittee. So those two separate items.
Let's see, Mark.
No, I'm, I'm Laura, Laura formally put her hand up.
Oh, sorry, Laura, I didn't see your hand there.
I thought that tonight we were gonna, I know that it wasn't in the packet for tonight, but the DTSC was supposed to come back to us. Has that been rescheduled?
I don't know.
Yes, I believe so. Sorry, I'm going to try to pull up our calendar here.
If it's in the calendar, I can just go check the calendar.
Yeah, I want to say it's coming back in October, Laura. Unless I'm thinking of something completely different.
Yeah, I apologize. I haven't been keeping up as well.
No, no worries. Um, you know what? We're, we haven't. Totally landed on a date. It's either going to be October. Fourth or eighteenth, I believe.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Let's see. Mark.
And this might be, I, I might be embarrassed myself with this question, but the site review criteria that you guys are. Attending the city council study, study session on Thursday. Well, where, I, I remember that meeting. I remember we, we provided all this input. I remember staff was taking it back and synthesizing. But are, is it now council is studying this up? But is there a final product to adopt? No.
No, there's no code changes associated with it. It's a, a study session. In fact, the code changes would be at the very earliest end of year. We, just this week, we're talking about some staffing. workload issues that may push that into quarter one. But this is not a.
Okay.
An item for them to vote on.
All right, great. Thank you.
Sure.
I think we lost John. John, are you there? All right, so I will take over for the moment and he'll hopefully come back. Any other matters? Amanda, anything on the calendar we need to know about? Besides October 3rd?
No, no, I don't think so. I think business as usual.
Okay. Hella, anything from our attorney that we need to know about?
Nothing from me.
Thank you, Brad. Anything from you that we need to know about?
No, not at this time.
All right, any other fellow board member comments? No? All right, since John does not seem to be coming back, I. Formally close this meeting and see you next time.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Night, everyone.